Pam, it looks like you're working out some audio issues. Can you, can you hear us?
What's wrong?
We can hear you. Okay, I've got seven o'clock. So if everyone is ready, I will go ahead and call the Tuesday, November 16th, special meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors to order. Um, and before we go to citizens input, I'll ask Dave, is there anything, Dave, that you would like to share with us in terms of participation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, everybody, for joining us. This is the November 16th special meeting.
I don't have any sound.
Oh, Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. And this meeting's been advertised as such by the PA Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting, and some space has been made at the township's main meeting room. For any public who wishes to attend in person, you can see I have a video set up right there in the main. If you are joining as a member of the public on the Zoom or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic you wish to speak about using the word bubble at the bottom of your screen. Just the typical procedure, real items. Any members of the public are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If there is a member of the public who wishes to speak, they may unmute when acknowledged by the chair and then ask their question or offer their comment and then asked to go back on mute again once your time is done. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name if any action is being taken when making a motion or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect any action taken. And then lastly, I'll take a roll call of the board and make sure that everybody can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate you're here when your name is called. Missed it, any?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Steckler?
Here.
All right, you sound good. Ms. Stevens?
Yes, here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave, and it looks like everybody is all set now that we can all hear and be heard. So first up, we're going to go to citizens input. And this will be, I'm also going to make a few comments in terms of the agenda at the end of citizens input. But first, let's go ahead and take any input for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any folks that would like to comment on items not on the agenda? All right, I'm seeing none. Um, I wanted to give an opportunity to any board members that wanted to comment on any public comment that we received via email prior to this meeting. Is there any, all right, and I'll recognize Steve Miller. Steve?
I, yeah, I just wanted to comment on an email that the board received prior to the meeting from, it said from a few residents. It was only signed by one, but apparently there were other people involved in putting together the comments. And I think there were some misconceptions about the budget that they were commenting on, and I just wanted to, to address some of the concerns they expressed. Since it's just the board here, I'll still go ahead and do it because I'm also addressing it for board members who haven't been doing this as many years as I have. I'm also warming up for next year when I'm going to be the, either the elder statesman or the old curmudgeon that just won't go away. So you guys can decide which I am. But now the, the, the email that we got has expressed some concerns about how much decrease we were seeing in the general fund or in the overall funds this year. And to point out, there was a $6 million decrease. And I did just want to comment that part of that, 2 million of it really isn't a decrease. It was the ARPA funds that were placed into the general fund and are being moved into a special fund. So it's not going anywhere. It just hasn't, we haven't had our meeting to determine how we're going to deal with those funds yet. So that 2 million is not a reduction of the general fund. It's just being set aside for future determination. Another million and a half of it was the park forest drainage, which is something that the board discussed at great length and determined that we, that was necessary that we forward with that. Same thing with a half million dollars for a traffic light at Sandy Drive. In addition to that, there was about two and a half million dollars in delayed funding that was either public works things we didn't do last year or the stormwater fee that we didn't assess this year because we were concerned about what the effects on the budget might be of COVID. And so we pushed them off to 2022. So it's not like it's new spending that's just suddenly dropped in on us. It's something that we delayed. So I just wanted to comment on that, that I really don't think there is the deficit that was perceived. The other thing is, just as an aside, was during the last campaign, the board was sort of criticized for having such a large fund balance. And now there's a question about us spending down our fund balance, which is one that I've been fighting in COG too, as far as the purpose of a fund balance. And right now, we have projects to spend that on, and we are. So that was the main thing. The other thing was, there was a question about, I mean, it was the letter presented to the staff was, you know, suddenly injecting some of these things to the board in this budget and things like the four and a half new employees is something we did discuss during the CIP process. So the board has seen many of the things that we're here, talking about here. The board has already seen them, addressed them. We've discussed them among ourselves. As far as hiring four and a half employees, basically, I would just point to the fact that we have a lot of development over the last 10 years, a lot more coming in the next few years with projects that we've already approved or will soon be approving. Those add a lot more need for police and public works, but they also add property taxes and income taxes for the residential parts. So I think that, yeah, I just wanted to comment on that, that email because, like I say, having done it for 16 years, I see a lot of general themes. Sometimes it looks like things are out of whack when they aren't, and I think that's the case now. So that's all.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'll speak for myself when I say I'm definitely not going to see you as a, what did he say, old crumb, crumbudgeon. I appreciate your experience and your, your thoughts. Okay, so just to further, oh, Lisa, Lisa.
Um, I just wanted to say, I got that email and I got a second email about our discussions tonight and Thursday. And so not to debate the content of the emails, but I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the public input and people actually going to the documents and looking at them and engaging with us and sending in their comments. I appreciate it. I appreciate the effort. So, you know, we can discuss, you know, the content, but I do appreciate that effort that people put forward.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I do appreciate it. If it sounded like I was criticizing the email, you know, I appreciate the input, but I just disagreed with it. So, or some of it. There were also things in there that were worth us taking a look at, so.
Thank you both, and I'm sure that the entire board agrees that we really appreciate the public being involved and working to inform themselves so they do have an educated opinion because it does take a lot of hours to really understand this stuff. And now to further extend our public input period, I wanted to just thank Diana Griffith for being here with us. She actually is in attendance, really to answer board questions about an item that's going to come up much, 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 much later in our agenda. So noticing she's actually still at the office, I, I think it would be really great if we could ask any board questions about that item now to Diana so she can go on home and doesn't have to stay for the duration of our meeting. I have, I know that Diana prepared a wonderful memo ahead of time that was very helpful and also assisted Dave in getting some other documents together in terms of the ag preservation program. Diana runs that program at the county. And so she is the one with the wealth of knowledge that we need to tap into. I know I have a few remaining questions. And so I wanted to first, though, open it up to other board members if they had any questions about the memo or the documents so we can release Diana. And thank you very much, Diana, for being here. Other board member questions? Lisa?
Uh, not so much a question, but it had been indicated that Diana would be presenting. So in, I guess, in lieu of her presentation, I'm wondering if she'd like to hit on some of the key points in her documents that she had sent over, which were really, really helpful, but to anybody who hadn't had a chance to read through them, I didn't have a chance to read thoroughly through everything that was sent today. So if she'd like to just comment on that so that we all have the, the full picture.
Sure, it would be helpful to know, Dave, were you able to share the memo that I sent you today, I mean, yesterday, rather?
Yes, I got that out. I distributed that earlier today.
Yeah, I think that certainly covers the key point. I, probably two points I'd like to make is Ferguson Township has already demonstrated what the township has been able to do by putting funds behind farmland preservation. In fact, it bolstered all of your efforts to protect agriculture in the township as well as all of the beautiful wide open spaces that make Ferguson Township such a beautiful place to live. So, you know, you've already demonstrated that support. I would just point that out that, and I think the other point that I made that I think is very important, you've already seen the impact of what losing Ferguson township support means in terms of providing match dollars for the state. The state's allocation to us was about $99,000 less than the previous year because of the budget cut last year. So those are the two key points, really bottom lining it for you that I'd like to make.
Thanks, Diana, and thanks, Lisa, for the question. So I guess I'll, I'll jump into my questions here. I guess just to piggyback on something you just said, Diana, one thing that's of concern for me is that Ferguson Township is one of the very few municipalities across the county that participates in the municipal partnership program. And so the way I'm, the way I'm seeing this is that if we had other municipal partners, we would be getting more and more and more money for farmland preservation. And so I'm curious as to, because when, so I did a fair amount of research for this, this, this item. And I, you know, I went to the county comprehensive plan. I've got soil maps up. I'm looking at where the ASA areas are, and it's pretty clear that other than the northwestern, we'll call it tier of Center County, there is valuable farmland in every other municipality. And that's really shown in that ASA map where you can see, you know, Worth and Walker and, and Potter and Spring and Benner and, you know, township after township after township has really valuable farmland, but none of them are contributing, except for Potter, to the farmland preservation program. So my question is, what is the county doing to recruit those municipalities into the farmland preservation program?
Well, I would add that the Half Moon Township Open Space Preservation Program has also contributed significantly. They contributed more than $200,000 to a single easement, which eased the burden on the county as well as the state. We're certainly encouraging more participation in this program. I mean, Ferguson, yes, Ferguson stands alone, Potter's only second to Ferguson in participation. We're reaching out. I've been in the position for two years. I can see a lot of work that's needed down the road to involve more municipal partnerships. A lot of it depends on where our applicants are from. The majority of our applicants are from Ferguson Township. We had two this year that we're preserving, and we have two coming up in 2022 that we're preserving. So, you know, I agree with you that it would be nice to see more participation, but I think Ferguson can be very proud when it's done in terms of having the highest concentration to preserve farmland as well as ASA acreage.
Um, okay. And you brought up the Half Moon Township program. I have limited understanding of their open space program, but my understanding was that it wasn't exclusive to farmland, that they also include other valuable, like woodland, forest land, that kind of stuff. Do you know if that's the case?
That is correct. They also have a 99-year lease program, which I think they're trying to transition out of now. We had a meeting with them the other day to talk about some farms that we might be able to work on together, preserve together. The Western Pennsylvania Conservancy also participated in that meeting. So they're definitely looking at ways that they can expand what they're doing. The conservancies tend to focus more on woodland, but we have actually been trying to include more of the woodland in our easements. We can't pay for them. The landowner has to donate the development rights to that woodland. But the state really likes to see us preserving the entire parcel within one easement.
And then quick other follow-up about the Half Moon program. So are you saying, I'm not sure if you're saying this or not, are you saying that all of the money that they allocate through that program can be counted toward that state giving of dollars to the county? Or is it only the money that goes to farms specifically? Or could, are those woodland parcels included in then that match money that's put up? So for example, if Ferguson Township had an open space preservation program that included woodland, would that also be able to be used as a match?
Right, it depends on whether there's an ag easement component to it, whether there's prime farmland being preserved as well because it's the mission of the PACE program to preserve the best soils, the, the prime farmland, the best farms around the state. So our focus is on the prime farmland. But, so that has to be part of that formula, basically. But certainly with the Half Moon project, the county in that case, I believe we contributed 5,998. The state bore the burden of about 300,000, and then Half Moon came up with more than 200,000 for that particular easement. And even though we jointly hold it, it's our office that inspects that farm every year and shares, shares that report with Half Moon Township.
Thanks, thanks. That's a great transition into my next few questions. And so you talked about the inspection that you shared with Half Moon, and there was a, a comment about the inspections in that memo. I've never seen one as a township supervisor, even though we've regularly contributed, you know, to easements barring last year. Do we, do we have them shared with us as well? And I just haven't seen them yet, or?
I, I did share last year's inspection reports with Dave. That point was raised at the last meeting that I attended, I believe Lisa raised it. And Dave also noted in the municipal partnership program sheet, which that memory you were sent linked to, that that is one of the expectations is that we will share inspection reports. I was not aware of that when I came into the position, but I have since corrected that.
Thanks, thanks so much. And then last few questions relate to potential dissolution of any, any, of any agreement. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but you know, the more prepared you are, the less likely it's going to happen, right? So I, I don't know what these agreements really look like, and I don't know if they contain dissolution language. So you're here, I thought I'd ask, if a landowner would want to dissolve their easement, I understand that they would need permission from the municipality, the county and the state. And just knowing how political things work, I can guarantee you that if the county and the state granted a dissolution, that we would grant that dissolution because of the political pressure involved. And I'm sure that it would be being asked for, for a good reason by the farmer. They're not going to do that in a flippant manner. They're going to really have thought it out and far be it for us to, you know, impede somebody's progress. And I'm, I'm just sure that we would let it be dissolved. I'm sure of it. So in the event that that would occur, would we, would our taxpayers receive their full investment back on that property? So if we'd invested $20,000 10 years ago, would we receive that back when it was dissolved? And would we receive it back with interest? Or would it be just that amount that we put in?
Well, honestly, there is not any case of this ever happening in Pennsylvania that I'm aware of. I mean, we, we advised the landowner that this is for perpetuity. We advise prospective buyers. I have to make sure that if there's new ownership of that preserved farm, that the complete and verbatim ag easement language carries over to that newly recorded deed to make sure that landowner honors the terms of that easement. So I'm not aware of any reserve farm ever being taken out of the program.
It just, right, I do understand that it hasn't yet occurred, but I'm asking if it should occur, is there language in the agreement that lets that landowner know and all of its heirs and anybody that receives that deed through purchase, that they would be responsible to repay that investment to the taxpayers that made it?
Well, there's no language of that kind because it just simply does not happen. It is not permitted. I'd be happy to send you a copy of a deed of easement. If you'd like.
That's okay. I just wondered how formal the agreement was in terms of expectations in the investment?
Strict. I mean, I, I monitor this, I, I monitor the deed transfers to, to monitor any new ownership. I get calls from realtors and prospective buyers all the time asking, can we take a farm out of preservation? The answer is no. It's permanent. It's, we've preserved farmland forever.
So can I, may I add a comment based on my understanding of the process? I think Diana is generally correct in, in that they, this doesn't happen. But if it were to happen, much like any easement, the valuation that's placed on it would change in time. The way that the conservation easement program is ran is that an appraisal is done by the applicant, by the, by the county. The applicant farmer has an opportunity to get a counter appraisal. And then if that appraisal from the applicant is in any way different from the counties, then there's a process to reconcile that. However, it can't exceed a certain amount. I believe in Center County, that's $4,000 per acre.
Dollars maximum per acre, yeah.
So a, an easement itself may be valued at $6,000 an acre, $10,000 an acre. It all depends on the appraised value, but they're capped on what they could get, they could realize in consideration for the easement. But that doesn't mean that the county, state and municipality in this case would be capped at what we would sell that easement at. So if we were to be in a position where we would sell back that easement to the farmer, to the property owner, it could be at some consideration that exceeds what that farmer was entitled to get for his or her land when they initially sold that easement into the program. In addition to the obligation to pay all of the rollback taxes and any applicable penalties that they would have otherwise been obligated to pay on the value of that easement over the duration, you know, of its, of its existence. So it would be, if it were approved, which as I think Diana illustrated is a very difficult thing to surmount, it would also come at a, at a pretty significant cost to the property owner or the prospective property owner if they wanted to develop it. In that, it would not only be a different easement amount, but you would also be expected to repay any, any taxes that would have been otherwise due on the property.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you much.
Yeah, I would also add that, you know, I was talking earlier before somebody got on the call, that, you know, Pendott is working on this State College Connected Project now. And they are looking at positive alternative possibly taking this new highway through some preserved farmland, which we're hoping they would not do. They would have to prove they have no other alternative. But if they did prove that they had no other alternative, they would have to pay back all of the easement holders, the Commonwealth, the county, and the municipality, if that's relevant, for that easement, whatever land they take.
That's really good to hear. I was under the impression that pretty much not even God could do a taking on a preserved farm. So, you know, because we really, I mean, we're really kind of, we do want to support farmland, you know, a preservation, of course, but, but frequently we box ourselves in because, you know, then we actually bar ourselves from a lot of connectivity in terms of bike paths. It's been, it's actually been a real major issue in regard to Pine Grove Mills connecting Pine Grove Mills and whatnot. So it's, it's intriguing to me that, that Pendott is even above God. I can't even believe it. So, okay, so, thank you. I have one more question, and I'm still trying to, it's a repeat from last year. I'm still trying to understand. So, okay, so the state gives us, gives money to the county, the county does a $50,000 match, and then Ferguson Township gives a lot of money, Potter Township gives $5,000, and then farms are preserved throughout the county. So farms that are not in Ferguson are preserved in the same year that Ferguson Farms are preserved. It seems like by us giving that money up, we are actually subsidizing other municipalities' farmland preservation. And, 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 you know, I, I believe in farmland preservation, but I also believe in an obligation to our own taxpayers that are funding our budget. And so I, I kind of like really, uh, I would really like to understand that more. And what I'd really love is to hear that, that all of the dollars that Ferguson puts in are going to Ferguson and that it's, and that the dollars that are then going to, let's say, Worth Township, that would have been used for Ferguson. I mean, help me, help me work that, help me work that out. How, how, when we're leveraging money for everybody else and they're not doing any of the heavy lifting, like, why, why should we continue that? It's, it's hard for me to wrap.
Funds for Ferguson Township. You're only leveraging funds for Ferguson Township. Your funds are only supporting the farms that we're preserving in Ferguson Township. So when Dave Provofer comes to a closing on a farm in Ferguson Township, he is handing that check directly to that farmer in Ferguson Township. He is demonstrating to that farmer that Ferguson Township is investing in that farm.
So that $150 an acre is on top of what the county offers and the, and so it's actually giving our farmers more than they would get. So like, just put some numbers on it. If the county was going to give $10,000 to us for farmland preservation, they'd still only be giving us $10,000, and then we're adding that $1,200. My math is terrible. We're adding that money on top per acre. It's not being subtracted from the 10,000 that then is given to some other township.
No, I, let me see if I can explain this a little more clearly. Your, your dollars are just Your, your dollars are just going to that Ferguson Township farmer. All right. The dollars that you give us, yes, they're put in the funds that we cert- certify, that our commissioners certify. And our state allocates a certain amount of money to match dollars that we provide. All right. But I'm trying to try to back up a little bit to where, because you went kind of off in a different direction. I'm trying to. I don't remember how you phrased that, but, um.
May I ask the question in a different way? I think.
Yes.
So Diana, I'll, let me illustrate maybe a hypothetical. I think that's, that gets what Miss Nene's asking. So if, if a Ferguson Township farm is accepted into the program, and let's say that the assessment just happens or the appraisal happens to work out right at the max, the $4,000 per acre. And the county is giving, uh, you know, say it's 10 acres, so $40,000 being preserved into the program. The county would give that $40,000 for their consideration to acquire that conservation easement. Then Ferguson Township offers $150 for those 10 acres, so $1,500. I'm doing that, all right. So with that, is that 40,000 that the county gives? Is the county giving 40,000 or $41,500 or is the county giving $38,500? Plus the 1,500 to make the 40K?
Yeah. What basically the farm owner is getting the price per acre that's established by the appraisal. All right. So what we do is when we find out whether we have a municipal contribution for that easement, we figure out the percentage that the Commonwealth is going to cover, the percentage that the county is going to cover, and the percentage that the participating municipality is going to cover.
If that answers my question.
Not participate, then the burden is on the Commonwealth and the county, as it was with the two Ferguson Township farms this year. So the farmer is not getting any more than they would get without your participation. But it's just that if you're not helping to cover those costs, the state has to cover more of them and the state has less money to give us to preserve more farmland. That's what we mean by leveraging. But there's no impact on Ferguson by other municipalities whatsoever. And I will say too, Potter Township, yes, they gave $5,000 in 2020, but they have given higher amounts in previous years.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't want to get into deliberation. I just want to leave it at questions for this period so we can deliberate later during the agenda. But I think that I have all of the information that I need to, to fully understand, to fully understand. Does anybody else have any questions for Diana? Okay, great. I think we're gonna close this up then and dive into the, thank you Diana so much, so much.
On the agenda. That was very thoughtful.
It was so helpful for you to be here, obviously. So thank you. All right, let's go ahead and dive into the presentation of the draft 2022 annual operating budget. Oh, and, uh, just a note. I think I'd like to, for us to try to do this in a similar manner as we did last year, which is kind of move through all of the items. And if we have things that we want to deliberate on or possibly change, kind of compile a list for at the end and then come back to it. That way we can kind of move relatively quickly through the budget and ask questions and then save any longer deliberation for the end. Um, okay. So first up, we've got the overview of major initiatives, changes to fund balance and projections for 2021 expenditures uh, by Dave Probaka Township Manager and Eric Anderson, Director of Finance.
All right. Thank you very much. I gotta recuperate. I gotta get my cadence back after that discussion. So good evening, everybody. Once again, um, it is really my honor to be able to present to you this evening, the draft 2022 Ferguson Township Annual Operating Budget. The budget you see this evening has been prepared and presented in accordance with all the applicable sections of Article 7 of the Ferguson Township Home Rule Charter. This evening, on November 18th, the board will be asked to review the line item budget in detail and make any amendments deemed to be in the best interest of the township prior to its presentation for tentative adoption on December 6th and then final adoption on December 13th. Uh, just before introducing Eric Anderson, I've got a few, uh, comments to introduce and, and some acknowledgements to make. First and foremost, I want to thank all township staff, particularly Eric Anderson, our finance director, uh, for the many hours of diligent preparation that went into the document presented for your review tonight. Also, I, I would very much like to acknowledge and appreciate the work of our leadership team, Chief Albright, uh, Centrice Martin, Dave Modricar, Jenna Worgo, Angela Calke. Uh, I think that's it. My, my, and I think that, I think I covered everybody on the leadership team. And then of course, uh, many hours spent by, uh, our frontline staff in developing, uh, proposals and in, uh, projecting expenditures and thoroughly assessing each line item so that the cost centers that you see align with the strategic plan, mission and vision of the Board of Supervisors in Ferguson Township. And that the budget preserves and enhances the quality of life and public service delivery for all those who live and work here. 2021 was an exciting year, I think, uh, for the township in many ways. Uh, while we continued to recover from the grip of a global pandemic, we were able to keep our eyes downfield and achieve some noteworthy accomplishments. First, we completed and occupied the new and soon to be lead gold certified public works maintenance facility. While this had been in the planning stages for nearly 20 years, bringing this project across the finish line was crucial and provides township staff with state of the art equipment and facilities to enhance service delivery, maintain the township's fleet and accommodate growth for the foreseeable future. That service on the building is manageable thanks to a triple A bond rating and extremely low interest rate. To add to that outstanding achievement, uh, the township launched online forums to improve the ease of doing business for our residents and business owners. Began its strategic plan, uh, began updating its strategic plan and recreation park and open space plan. Made investments in our parks and playgrounds, settled outstanding litigation on land use matters, negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement with the police association in good faith by both parties. Established new regulations for tree canopy preservation, affordable housing and more. Brought the killer of Gene, Gene Tuggie to justice. Launched an agritourism event, Route 45 Getaways, which was a huge success, and began the Pine Grove Mills Transportation Mobility Study. And I'm proud to say that this list is far from comprehensive. While the proposed budget continues our tradition since 2006 of no proposed tax increases, it is of course noteworthy that 2022 is the first year in which the stormwater management utility fee will begin to generate revenue uh, for the township to use on stormwater management, infrastructure and capital improvements. It's not lost on me nor staff that this subject has generated significant controversy. It's my hope that this budget review will reinforce the need for the township to generate the additional revenue that was necessary to meet our significant stormwater liabilities as well as to shore up reserves across all governmental funds to continue to invest in our community for years to come. The other noteworthy revenue line, and Mr. Miller alluded to this earlier, is, and, and is that a committed fund balance of $2,037,072, which the township received from the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, is presented in the budget under the general fund line item. Board has a work, get, uh, work session scheduled for December 7th to discuss applications of the fund. And I invite anybody on the call who's interested to attend. Township is eligible to free up $1,8,347 that is accounted for as lost revenue due to the pandemic from that allocated pool. I will be recommending that the board consider this decommitment of fund balance and leaving the remaining $1,028,725 to be earmarked for approved purposes under the act, such as stormwater infrastructure, broadband investments and assistance to buoying local economies. Decisions to utilize these monies will in, will influence the final budget figures as well as the financial position of the township at year end. Until those decisions have been made, however, I'm presenting them to you this evening as restricted fund balance so that we can properly segregate and account for the, for those funds. 2022 is also an ambitious year for the township and the budget reflects and augments that ambition. I think if it could be summarized in one word, that word would be infrastructure. Road projects like paving and traffic signal construction alone total $4,175,000 and will address a significant backlog of road repair, ADA enhancements for pedestrian safety and other road and bike lane improvements. The budget invests in the planning and design of priority projects established in the Northland Area Transportation Mobility Study, positioning the township well to leverage state and federal grant funding for multimodal streetscape enhancements in the corridor and surrounding areas. Additionally, money has been appropriated to enhance our police department with new equipment and digital forensic software. You'll hear more about that in just a moment. And invest in the first phase of redevelopment of suburban park. Easement, uh, excuse me. Uh, purchase conservation easements to protect farmland from encroaching development and invest in the first phase of redevelopment of suburban park. I skipped a line there. Ooh, I was doing so good. All regional obligations continue to be met in the proposed budget. Pension liabilities are adequately funded and investments are made in community engagement and the, the development of professional staff. All these achievements are made while enhancing, not sacrificing, the high quality public service delivery to which this community has rightly become accustomed. So now if it pleases the board, I'll, I'll turn things over to Eric Anderson, Director of Finance, for his annual overview. In doing so, I invite everyone in attendance this evening to listen carefully to the proposed budget, ask difficult questions and for the board to effect amendments that will bring this document more in line with your vision for the community. This document is a living document, carefully scrutinized all throughout the fiscal year to improve results and be more fiscally accountable. Transparency is at the heart of everything we do at Ferguson Township and our budget has received three consecutive distinguished budget presentation awards. We hope for a fourth, uh, hearing back shortly from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is given to state and local government who exhibit the highest standards of financial reporting around the country. I think you'll find the draft 2022 operating budget is no exception to that legacy. Thank you. Eric, I'll turn it to you. There's your cue.
Thanks, Dave. Um, Centrice, can I get access, uh, share my screen? Share screen to share. And I'm going to like that and bring up the overview. Do you guys see that?
Yes, you're good.
All right, cool. Got like five things open at once. I'm gonna make sure I got the right ones. All right. So I got a short PowerPoint I'd like to go over as we do pretty much every year. I want to thank everyone for attending the 2022 budget meeting. Uh, we'll discuss the key items that we will talk in great detail either tonight or Thursday. Now. As Dave said, I'd like a special thanks to the board, the staff, department heads and the manager for all the work involved in preparing this budget. It is, it is a result of many hours of research, organization, calculations, changes and data entry. We can be proud of the work performed in this regard and ensure the public is represented by professionals with the necessary skill and expertise in providing quality services to the public at favorable cost. Couple of budget fundamentals people may not be aware of. It is on the cash basis, which meaning that is prepared as if we paid and received cash for all transactions. This is not the case with the accounting at the end of the year, which is based on the accrual method. There are inherent differences in the two methods. They will never match exactly. The budget is an annual authorization to spend. Each budget authority ends at December 31st. Capital projects may span several years while the budget is annual. Therefore, estimates are needed to account for the gap between one budget to the next. Staff attempts to be as accurate as possible, yet there is a one to two month gap between the completion of the budget document and the end of the year. Therefore, there'll be some differences. Staff works hard to keep these differences to a minimum. Regarding the budget types, township is currently has 15 different funds divided into five groups depending upon the intent of the fund. For 2022, the stormwater fund was moved from a capital project fund to special revenue fund since it was a dedicated source of revenue beginning in 2022. This slide depicts the changes in fund balance, um, that which, um, Steve referred to according to the budget. I did add a line for the interfund transfers to display where the money from the general fund is going. The budget investment in capital project is a reason for the deficits. The timing and length of the projects will determine the actual expense for the year. Just because we budget, it doesn't mean we're actually spending. You can see, um, we're starting with a total of $17 million and we're down to 10, uh, a, a def- a decrease of like 6.6 million. Most of that is, you know, you got general fund a decrease, which is really interfund transfers. You got a decrease in the capital projects because of the investments and also special revenue, which is mostly liquid fuels and stormwater fund. So if you look at the governmental fund balances, which is all the funds other than the trust funds or the pension or the TUDIC trusts, you can see generally, we're pretty stable. The increase in 2019 was the bond, the additional, uh, revenue that we got from issuing bonds of, uh, seven million bucks. So you look at, um, in 2022, we typically, we're investing a lot in infrastructure. That's why you'd see such a drop in the, the fund balance. You look at the general fund balance trend from 2017 up to 2022, it's pretty stable again. And then again, we're, we're anticipating and a decrease, and that's pretty much related to the township's procedure for estimating the budget. They typically overestimate expenditures, underestimate revenues. There's no apparent reason that we will not do better this year, actually, as opposed to what the budget shows. For the general fund, you know, look at the revenue sources. By far, the income tax, earned income taxes, 54.4%. Other taxes, which is transfer tax and uh, local services tax, 14.2%, property tax, 11.11.4. So if you add those up, you're over at 80% of the total general fund revenue. And then you move down to the federal payments, which is the ARPA funds, that's 8%. But you can see those four items make up a giant, uh, amount of money relative to the total budget in the general fund. Expenditures by type, you look at salaries, employee benefits, regional programs, and then interfund transfers, they make up a large majority of our spending. Total of 14.6 million. Here's, um, what Steve was alluding to, and I think, um, we'll be discussing this, um, this, tonight or next Thursday. Um, the 2022 budget includes substantial investments in infrastructure. Such projects as $700,000 in micro surfacing, 1.7 million for the Park Hills drainage project, 250,000 for streetlights upgrades and Pine Grove Mills, 4.2 million in public works projects, including paving, bike pass and traffic signals, and $700,000 in suburban park construction project. The funding comes from tax revenue, the stormwater fee, state liquid fuels funding and other grants and existing fund balance. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Eric? Okay, I'm, I'm seeing none.
Thank you.
Eric, you want to stop your screen share if you, yeah, that's a cool picture, bud.
Okay, um, looks like we are, are we ready to move on to the discussion, discussion of general fund revenues led by Eric Anderson?
Sure. Let me bring up my budget.
Revenues are on page 51.
Yeah.
Dave?
Page 52 is, uh, the narrative begins on 52. Um, as I spoke just a moment ago, uh, beginning with real estate taxes, I'll go over the, the major items. And then if you have any questions on the smaller ones, we can talk about them. Uh, beginning with the real estate taxes, the township continues developed land parcels, most recently the yard at Old State. Given the low tax rate, the increase in assessed value is relatively minimal in relation to other taxes received by the township. Of course, the school district receives far more revenue from real estate than township does because the rates are exceptionally higher. We included that 1% increase in property tax revenues for the 2022 budget. And that's historically what we've been using and what we've seen. On page 53. On page fifty-three is the meat. Transfer taxes are expected to be robust as the drag from COVID subsides and people return to more common activities. Ferguson is a highly desirable place to live, and the demand is strong for housing. Town, the township charges one point two five percent on the transfer of real estate. Is reasonable to accept, expect additional sales and income next year. So we increased it one hundred thousand dollars. The earned income tax revenue is the largest source of funding for the township, making up more than half of the total general fund revenue. Thankfully, PSU did not cut back staffing during the COVID outbreak, and the diversity of employment in the township has helped residents maintain a high-level, high employment level. The township does not generally have a lot of retail restaurants as other adjacent municipalities do that were hit hard by the loss of employment. The budget includes a three percent increase delayed from last year. As you notice, we dropped it last year as well as a three historical three percent annual increase for twenty twenty-two. So we acted as if COVID never hit us. Local services tax eleven on employees, one dollar per pay up to fifty-two dollars per year, and generally is very stable, and that's on the following page. Um, fifty-four. If you go down, I've just skipped down, um, to page the ARPA funds, federal grants, page fifty-eight. With over a million dollars in funding for twenty twenty-two alone, this represents eight percent of total of general fund totals. And when we get to the stormwater fee in Fund Twenty, this estimated to be one point three six million in revenue to the township. And that's all I have as far as revenue goes.
Okay, questions for Eric in terms of the revenue? Okay, seeing none. Looks like we are ready to move on to the general fund. Um, first up, we've got Public Safety, uh, by Chief Chris Albright and Manager Pabokan. Oh, Steve.
I just wanted to make one comment, uh, to encourage Tiara to uh, ask any questions, uh, she would have to, as if she was a board member, because all of this, she doesn't have a vote on this, uh, you, this will be your budget. So, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to jump in as if you were, uh, already on the board, so.
Thanks, Steve. All right, Chief and Dave, you're up.
If I'll let you take it away, uh, Public Safety starts on page one oh two.
Can I share my screen to progress down through the budget or just want to do it?
A screen share is a good idea if you want to do that. Or not, I mean, it's your call.
Whatever the technology will allow.
It's my first time sharing my screen. I generally don't do this. So, so here we are on page uh, one oh two. It is the Public Safety Budgets or the Police Department Budgets. So on this page, you will find the um, organizational chart of the department. We are twenty-two sworn officers with two, um, civilian administrative staff, a part-time ordinance enforcement officer that is shared with both planning and zoning and a part-time school crossing. Accomplishments for twenty twenty-one. We remain as a accredited agency through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. We are up for reassessment in twenty twenty-three. We are still using body cameras and car cameras. Um, as I said, they have been a wonderful tool, and, uh, we are up to renegotiate those in twenty twenty-three. As far as, uh, you know, some of our activities, uh, or serious crimes for the last twelve months, um, were up, but that's compared to last year, you know, you had the COVID, there was a lot of you know, there, a lot of things were shut down, so it's it's sometimes hard to compare the last twelve months versus the the previous twelve months. So you will see some increases in certain things, and, uh, that those those numbers actually bring us back to kind of where we were in twenty nineteen before, uh, COVID. So said for, um, twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and eighteen, um, you know, part-one offenses as you're more serious crimes as compared to eighty in twenty twenty-two, and we had three hundred and sixty-two part-two offenses in twenty twenty-one compared to three hundred and thirty-one in twenty twenty. Officers made over seventeen hundred traffic stops during the last twelve months. Um, officers administered naloxone or Narcan um, to save the three persons, there are three people that were experiencing an opioid overdose. All three of those individuals survived. We have a drug detective that is assigned to the, uh, Regional Drug Task Force. Um, the task force in the last several months conducted, um, ten search warrants, they made twenty, twelve arrests of mid-to-upper-level drug dealers that were distributing heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, and pills throughout the region. And in most of those investigations, the drugs were being trafficked from New Jersey into Center, Blair, and Mission Counties. As Dave said earlier, one of the accomplishments too for last year was, uh, you know, finding some resolution for the murder of Jean Tuggie and being able to arrest a gentleman in that case, and he's still awaiting trial. We have a, um, detectives that's still assigned to the cold case team. He's working with the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office or to missing persons cases that remain open, Jennifer Shadle and Cindy Song. During the last twelve months as well, we had eighteen death investigations, one of those being a drug overdose and one being a suicide. During the year, um, a lot of our events that we hope to host were canceled, uh, for COVID, but we're able to do some things, uh, virtually and some things in person. Last year, we did Shop with a Cop, and that was a wonderful event, and we're working with Pat and Township right now to, uh, have it all set up, ready to go this year. Some of the virtual events that we hosted, uh, this year were Special Olympics, the Buddy Walk. Uh, but we still were able to get into some churches and, uh, you know, community groups and talk about scams, some of the bigger things that, um, are impacting people. We have, uh, officers that are specially specially trained in child safety seats and officers were, did twelve, um, child safety seat checks over the last twelve months. We've done a hundred and seventy-seven school walkthroughs. Essentially, officers just go to the schools while they're open, go in, interact with the teachers and the kids, and, you know, I said, create that positive, um, you know, contact between officers and everything at the school. We, um, did a lot of work this year trying to do some, you know, outreach as far as stories on scams, doing, uh, you know, traffic concerns and major incidents to our communications coordinator. Officer Lewis maintained his computer forensic certification. He, uh, in his first nine months, uh, well, the first nine months of twenty twenty-one, he's analyzed eighteen cell phones for computers and, uh, ten miscellaneous devices. Also, this year I was able to finally bring, um, a training course through the Police Executive Research Forum. It's a well-renowned, uh, course in integration, integrating communications and tactics. And, um, you know, it pretty much instructs officers to, you know, create distance between, you know, a person in crisis, um, with the intent of trying to slow it down, reducing trend, you know, reducing tensions, giving, um, officers the ability to, like, you know, develop a report and increase the chances of voluntary compliance. One of the nice things that that came out of that class was, you know, that stuff that we're already teaching our officers, so I was very, very happy to hear all that. For initiatives as far as twenty twenty-two, an officer left, um, our department to join a department down in Dolphin County. So our goal is to get her replaced in twenty twenty-two. And also, the other thing that we talked about during CIP that, and it's also a discussion for this budget, is adding an officer to the department. So right now, as I said before, we're twenty-two full-time officers looking at bringing that up to, uh, twenty-three full-time sworn officers. And some of that is driven by, you know, since some of the new developments that are being built now, some that are just built out, and, uh, you know, the increase in calls associated with those. And, um, you know, my, my, my goal with that position is to create a traffic slash community relations position that the officer can go out and, you know, hit our problem times doing some traffic enforcement at those times that they're not doing traffic enforcement to to go out and engage in different community, um, events and 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 try to build, you know, as I said, our our relationship with the community. Um, once again, you know, along that same line is continue, you know, building, moving outreach. Um, the shop with the cop, as I said, we have that in the process already. And one of the other things that, you know, I I I noticed an awful lot when I was sort of nosing around Facebook earlier in the year around Halloween was, uh, trunk and tree. Honestly, I'd never heard of it, and, uh, I think that's a pretty neat thing where take a cruise or whether it be to a park or a highly populated area, kind of decorate the trunk and hand out key, and said, I think that's a pretty good thing that we're going to strive for next year. Continue the training levels that we have, uh, now and and improve on those moving forward. And one of the other things too is the county got a grant to, um, fund mental health services through, to do enhance mental health services throughout the region. And, you know, it calls for integrating mental health specialists in police calls that involve a mental health aspect. And at this point in time, there's no policies or procedures for that, so that's, we're all going to sit down as a group and, you know, get those things, you know, hashed out between us. And the other thing is, uh, our RMS system, as I talked about it before, twenty nineteen, it went live. I was hopeful in twenty twenty that we would get it resolved. Hopeful twenty twenty, we, twenty twenty-one, we'd get it resolved, and now I'm hopeful twenty twenty-two, we're going to get it resolved. So moving into the expenditures of the budget, uh, the first portion of this is the mobile command vehicle. The mobile command vehicle is owned by, um, the center region and and the county. So we share the cost and the expenses. It's housed here and maintained here. And, um, so, so that's the first portion of that. Yes.
Hi, Chief. Um, did you, uh, do we receive like rental revenue from that? Or do we just split the expenses and we pay the same amount as folks that are not storing that?
We store it, we we bill, uh, twelve hundred dollars, twelve, twelve hundred eighty dollars a year. It's divided up over the different entities. That's all factored in, so that what you see down there, that nine thousand three hundred and seventy-eight, that's divided among, I think it's six, six or seven agencies. So it works out to be, I think it's about fourteen hundred dollars apiece for everyone.
I see. So we're paying a portion of storage?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Then a one-ten, one-twelve, one-fourteen on here includes the salaries. Some of that's, um, as I said, contract, some of it deals with also the, um, wage adjustments. One-seventy-nine is longevity. It's a contractual issue. It depends on the officer's length of time with the organization, how much extra they get for their years of service. And that's a lump sum payment. One-eighty is our, is our overtime budget, um, no change from previous years on that. Um, essentially, when you look back at our overtime budget, a little bit over fifty percent of of the money that we use for this is reimbursable, whether it's through Penn State, whether it's through our federal grants that we get, um, for traffic enforcement or drug enforcement. Uniforms and equipment. There's a two thousand dollar increase request for next year in that. And I said, that that covers, um, clothing, jackets, boots, things like vests. And, uh, the 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 reason for the increase is we're looking for, um, some, some utility, utility, uh, uniforms that when somebody's called in to do crime scene processing, that they're not uniform, getting all muddy and dirty on 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 those details. Office supplies, once again, remaining the same, thirty-five hundred dollars. Criminal investigations, um, same amount as previous years. Vehicle gasoline, pretty much the same as it has been previous years. I'm sure Dave will hit on this later on, but we have a new gas management, gas tracking system that will be able to give us a better idea of what we are using per car. And, um, as it's three of our vehicles now, patrol vehicles are hybrids, so we'll be able to compare their fuel economy to, um, some of our older cars. Paging down through to go ahead.
Real quick, before we move on from that, is that, um, it's, it says that you were budgeting two dollars and thirty-one cents a gallon for gas, so should we look at increasing that budget?
This is, this is the number Dave Modricar and I came up with. I'm not sure what, what Dave, if there is any change to that. Eric?
Lisa, I don't know if you were this, but we don't pay any, any, uh, taxes on gasoline where the public does. That's why it's such a lower price. It's like a dollar a gallon difference.
Which equals what we're, the rest of us are paying right now about, so that makes sense.
Dave, if you're talking. Yeah, I'm sorry. And 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 we also, uh, we do, we buy in bulk essentially, so we get a contract rate as opposed to paying kind of retail. So in addition to the the relief of taxes, we also, uh, tend to do significantly better than what you'd pay at the pump as a consumer.
I have a question, Pam. Um, you're hiring an additional officer. It looked like, uh, to me, all the names were male. Are you going to try to hire a woman?
The, uh, the current officers all in the, that are employed are all men. And as you can say, are existing. We just went through a, um, eligibility list, a testing process, and, uh, we we had a couple women that applied, but they didn't make the top, the top of the list.
It appeared that the one, the one person that left was a woman.
Yes, yeah, she accepted a position with, um, Lower Paxton Township down in Dolphin County.
Keep looking for a woman.
Yes. Okay. I'll shoot back into, uh, two forty, general expenses. No change in that one. Immunition-related expenses that covers, as I said, some of our our firearms training. Um, you know, upkeep of of our equipment and taser repairs and taser cartridges, and also fees that, uh, we pay to use different firearms training facilities. Um, I think that one, yeah, there's about a five hundred dollar request increase and change on that one. Community relations, um, that's going to stay, you're looking at staying the same on that one. One of the best examples for some of the things we buy through that is the glow bracelets that we had during Halloween. Um, those are some of the different things that we buy out of that account. Vehicle parts. There's a slight decrease in that with some of our newer vehicles. Um, they they haven't, we haven't hit the point of, uh, you know, it, any mechanical issues. We, we had a vehicle that was a CNG-based and, um, I shouldn't say base, but it was converted, and, uh, it was a mechanical nightmare for us and cost us a lot of money in repairs. So it is now pretty much completely off CNG. So it is now pretty much completely off C N G and it is set to be replaced in two thousand and twenty-two. Equipment and maintenance. The, the little bit of the change there deals with the increase in RMS maintenance fees. Um, we, we, we still were paying those, but they are being paid at a altered rate that we're, all of these systems of the records management, management system aren't operational. So the parts of it that aren't operational, we're not paying those maintenance fees. And whenever they get it up and running, we will pay maintenance fees from that point forward. They won't go back and try to collect the things that, um, the monies that weren't paid because the system wasn't working. Moving to two-sixty batteries, there's an increase on that one. We're looking at replacing some of our A E D. Batteries, they're slowly, the A E Ds are rated to last eight years, but the batteries are going quicker than expected and quite frankly, that's, they get used a fair amount. And we're also looking at, um, you know, replacing some of our taser batteries as well. DNA testing, that's a placeholder, just in case we have to send something out for DNA testing. We try to do most of it through the, you know, Pennsylvania State Police Lab, but sometimes on a big case, it may be, you know, six months, eight months, twelve months down the road before the state police can get it tested in their lab and move, and we may want something a little bit quicker. So this gives us the, you know, funding to take care of that if we need to get that testing. Three-seventeen relates to the, um, monies that we get from federal and state grants to do traffic enforcement. Ferguson Township manages the DUI grants, the trapped in two traffic safety grants for the region. Uh, we, we get paid for not only our time for managing it for the manager, but we also get reimbursed for the finance department's time to, um, overseeing that program. Communications, no change in that. Radio maintenance, no change. Transportation, no change. Advertising, printing, no change. Outside vehicle repairs, no change. Our training, no change in that. For, for, um, two thousand and twenty-one, we had some of our, we, we train regionally. Every year, the January, February, we host, we, we get together, the, uh, you know, area chiefs get together and determine, you know, what training's important to us regionally. And then we work on getting that in for the first you know, those days in January and February. Because we were, we didn't have that training as a group, we did it individually, you know, between the departments. So we, we hope to get it, the in-service training back in line. So we're all training together next year. But I'm not certain where that'll be yet. And moving on to contracted services, you'll see an increase in this one. And it primarily deals with let me scroll down to it here. You'll see the Center County Booking Center is requesting twelve thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars for their operational costs in two thousand and seven, State College Borough, Patent Township, Ferguson Township, Bellefonte Borough and Spring Township, Penn State and the Center County Government entered into a intergovernmental agreement to share the cost, to share the cost of the centralized booking center housed at the prison. Funding to cover those operational costs of the booking center are primarily paid by arrestee fees and job applicants. If there isn't enough funding to cover those operational costs of the booking center, the member, the member agencies are asked to cover the costs. The men, the member agency contribution allocation is based upon a three-year average of the number of bookings processed by the specific agency. Um, in this case, the booking center, as I said, has been up and operational since, I think it was two thousand and eight. And, um, we haven't had to pay anything into the booking center since two thousand and eleven. There were a couple of things that contributed to the factors, contributed to the, to the shortfall. Um, some of it is fewer arrests. To, in time period between two thousand and six and two thousand and fourteen, number of arrests was about twenty-three hundred. And in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, it reduced down to about seventeen hundred. And then during COVID, it was, uh, just about fifteen hundred. Um, and another factor in this too is, excuse me, judges are waiving the fees that arrestees pay for, um, to, to help cover the costs of the booking center. So some of the things that we, that we've done is had conversations with the uh, president judge to discuss the impact of waiving the arrestee fees. The booking center is looking at increasing the fees, um, to both the arrestees and also the applicants. That part of the issue is, once again, if the judges continue to waive the fees, um, this really isn't going to do us any good. And, and the booking center really doesn't want to increase the applicant fees too much because they want to remain competitive to other agencies that do fingerprinting that, you know, if, if, if they become more expensive than another entity doing that, that, that no one will continue using that service through the booking center. And then one of the other things that the prison has done as well, um, is, you know, reduced, you know, reduce the staffing cost. And, uh, you know, reduce the overtime that it costs in some of the cases to, to staff the center.
I have some questions, Chief.
Yeah, sure.
So the central booking facility, um, you said there were certain members that are involved with that, Ferguson being one. But the list that you gave is a lot smaller than all of the municipalities in the whole county. So do other municipalities have to use another facility or do they use that facility?
This is the only places that have police agencies.
Okay, so we are then paying for other municipalities to utilize that facility? No?
No, no.
How, how?
Those are, those other agencies are, those other areas that don't have a police force are covered by the state police. And the state police have their own.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. So then, okay. So then they're not then processed through there?
The state police?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, state police don't process through.
Okay, okay, I see.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, Chris, correct me, um, I, they pay a fee to have state police, um, cover their needs.
Not yet, no. Those other jurisdictions, no.
That was really fought by the rural municipalities. That was really fought, unfortunately. Okay, thanks, Chief.
All right, education, moving down to four-sixty, um, as I said earlier. Um, Dan Lewis is our forensic, um, digital forensic examiner. He's working on his master's degree in cybersecurity. And, um, he's looking to finish it up in two thousand and twenty-two. So I've allocated twenty thousand dollars for, for that. Under, uh, four-ten, four-sixty-two, the academy training. It's, uh, budgeted to send two people through. Um, as I said, we, we have one definitive opening. And, um, you know, I said, depending on discussions tonight, there might be, you know, a second one. So this funding will cover, um, you know, the cost for sending some of the academy.
Chief, I'm sorry. Another question. It was actually about the master's reimbursement. I, I, I remember this vaguely from last year. Do, do we, do we have a, a, a an obligation of the individual to stay for a certain period of time after completing? Okay, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, they, they're required. Like if it's a two-year degree, they have to stay for, you know, two years, whatever it took them to get that program taken done.
Thanks.
So once, once he's finished in two thousand and twenty-two, he would have to stay till at least two thousand and twenty-four or pay the township back fifty percent of, uh, the tuition costs. And then on the academy training too, just so the board knows. Right now, the state's reimbursement for this is they pay seventy-five percent of the tuition and forty-five percent of the wages. That's how they're currently figuring out their, um, their reimbursement if somebody does, if we do send somebody to the, um, academy. And then under four-ten, seven-fifty, the non-capital. We, we've seen, uh, you know, a lot more complaints dealing with noise where it'd be advantageous for us to have a decibel meter. So I'm, you know, asking for money to be set aside for the decibel meter. Um, training mats, training suits. And also, um, we have our old shotguns that we use for beanbag rounds are less lethal, um, options. And, uh, those are at a point that, um, they're starting to break down on us and, uh, looking at replacing those. And then one more section in, it gets page one-sixty-three here. Under the capital. I'm trying to get there. And then under capital, uh, four-ten, thirty, four-ten, seven-fifty, uh, replacements of a the, as I said, the vehicle that's currently equipped with C N G, replacing it with a Ford hybrid S U V. And the costs associated with that, replacing one of our admin cars with a Ford, um, hybrid sedan on that end. And then, as we talked about earlier, in the C I P was the gray key. That's the cell phone extraction software that Officer Lewis uses for forensic data investigations. And I know you'll see like that ten thousand dollar, um, amounts there. One of the things that we're doing is we're actually splitting this cost with Patent Township. Where we're going to create a, uh, computer, a digital forensics lab here in our office. So so they have, they have somebody that's certified in other things. Our guy is certified in, you know, more of a, more comprehensive, that we'll be able to work together to, to utilize that software. And, and that, you know, technology for, for both departments. And then the one last thing is the, uh, final payment for the records management system. Uh, once again, as I said, I'm optimistic that we'll get this taken care of in two thousand and twenty-two, but, yeah, we'll see.
Chief, Pam Pickler, um, I have a question on the vehicle purchase. Did you look at all electrics or i- is that too soon?
I, there's a chance for it with the admin cars, but as far as the patrol cars themselves, I mean, we have radios, we have lights. Um, all those things that I, I, the, the technology isn't there yet to operate those.
Too much juice.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, one of the nice, one of the nice things about the new Ford, the SUVs that we have in patrol is they they have a power management system that they cycle on and off, you know, when idling. If they need to recharge the batteries, the engine starts up, recharges the batteries and then just automatically shuts off. Um, and I said, that's the, the guy, the, the officers that have been using the cars. They notice, you know, that they're using less fuel, um, during the shift and, and said, we get that, um, fuel system up and running, we'll be able to see that and really put numbers to it and see what it's doing.
Thank you. Patty.
Um, hi, Chris. I have a question about the DNA testing, the placeholder that we have there. Um, have we had to utilize or send anything out?
No.
Recently? So that was just a recommendation from the, um, I forget who you said recommended it.
We, we, that's, that's kind of been, that's been a placeholder in the budget. I'm thinking for the last five, six, seven, eight years that we've had that in there. Um, as I said, in, in the past. If we, if we, as I said, with it, depending on, yes, that's some type of sexual assault where, you know, we have a predator and we need something done quickly. These labs usually have a quick turnaround. A private lab has a quick turnaround versus what the Pennsylvania State Police can do for us.
Okay, so then I guess my question is Laura, do we have a mechanism whereby we can approve something if, should it, the need arise rather than placeholdering?
So.
Is that, I was going to say Dave.
Chief, can you stop your screen share? I think we can.
Yep, yep.
Probably. Get back in the same room together. Um, to, to answer your question is, I, it, it really wouldn't, in all likelihood, um, necessitate a board, uh, approval. Yeah, and the way that, and perhaps I should have described this a bit in my introduction, my obligations are as manager to balance the, or to stay within my expenditure limit set by fund. So really while we line item our, our individual expenditures, as the chief just described in his department and we do in our other departments, really what you're looking at is the total general fund expenditure amount. And in just about every case, uh, with, you know, very few, if any exceptions, including, uh, what it's looking like for this year. We do not exceed our total amount allocated in, in the general fund. Uh, but it's good to budget as in, in the individual line items, what we expect our expenditures might be. Um, as opposed to just leaving a lot to chance. If the board removed this item and we had a need to send some, uh, labs out or, or DNA samples out to a private lab, we'd still be able to do that. We, we wouldn't need board authorization unless for whatever reason, that's what tipped the scales and caused us to go over budget on our expenditures across the general fund, which is our largest governmental fund. So the, the likelihood of that is, is very minimal.
And I guess I, I, the other question I had was about uniforms. And that was just like in the military, you're given sort of in the beginning, an allotment for your uniforms, but, uh, basically we bought all, all the uniforms, you know, aqua flash, camouflage, chokers, uh, dress blues, everything. Um, just find it odd that we as a municipality, I guess, isn't that what it said, that we maintain uniforms or we keep them?
Yes, yeah.
It's, it's contracted.
Common practice?
It's in our collective bargaining. It's a, it's an allowance that's described in our collective bargaining agreement.
That was my question. Okay, all right.
Chief, chief, is that a pretty common practice for a police department to supply uniforms for, um, for their, uh, police?
Yes, I mean, you, you get some places that create a boot allowance that maybe they'll only allow you three hundred dollars for um, a pair of boots and gloves. Um, traditionally, we don't even spend that. I mean, we, we have some guys that have uh, foot troubles that might spend a little bit more on a pair of boots because they have to be a little bit more orthopedic, you know, whereas it's that for me, I, I a hundred dollar pair of boots and I'm, I'm flying.
And, um, I just had one more question. What's O C? When it was talking about officers' uniforms and like badges and stuff, what's O C?
Oh, that's a pepper spray.
Thank you.
Hey, any more questions, Lisa?
Chief, um, I have a few things. So going back to this, I have page one oh nine. It's the peer-to-peer counseling and mental health wellness. Um, in the narrative, it had said that something wasn't quite functioning with the system. And I'm wondering if you think you might need more for that to kind of compensate for what's not working there or I don't want that to suffer because of some technical problems. So if there is something else you think that could help, um, support that initiative, let us know.
The interesting part of this is, I think it was Friday of last week in working with our phone vendor, we were actually able to get the, what they did is they engineered and designed a platform for us. And it took a lot longer than what, what they, what they had anticipated and I anticipated. And as of last Friday, they had it up and fully operational. So as I said, it's, it's working great. Part of that, part of that peer-to-peer Part of that, part of that peer-to-peer counseling is, um, just in case, you know, as I said, we, we have. We have the peer-to-peer, just in case there needs to be any training. And then one of the other things too is, um, you know, there's been some recent changes in the law. That if, that if we feel that somebody, an officer is having. Um, you know, showing signs of post-traumatic dr- stress disorder. That we send them to, uh, council. And some of this money could also be paid, you know, used to pay for that as well.
Oh, that is really good to hear that that's working. Um, so you think that that is enough?
Yeah.
To support those needs. Okay. Well, thanks for doing that. Um. I think that's great. Then, um, a couple of items down. So this is the community relations and crime prevention. A couple of meetings ago, I had brought up the bicycle car accident on North Atherton, um, and. Just how limited we are and what we can do with those kinds of things. So just try to, you know, think of other ways that we can. Reach out to the community and, you know, one thought was to get some reflective gear that we could hand out, you know. Some kind of, you know, little, uh. Whatever, you know, there's lots of different options, you know, maybe some lights, uh, that are not that expensive. Um, and for pedestrians too, because we've got all those walkers around, um, the Ferguson Township School and. So Dave had mentioned a, um. Budget for that. And I'm wondering if this is that one. So considering we, it looks like we used that up. Last time, if we wanted to look at adding something for that, uh, specific use, so something to, um. To assist bikers and pedestrians and, you know, um, being aware of their own responsibility and, you know, giving them some. Aid and getting some reflective, uh, gear on themselves. So, um. I want to put that out there, if this is the right place for it and, uh, your thoughts on that.
My end, uh, as I said, Dave did mention that to Sergeant Ryan Hendrick, and I know he ordered some, you know, some reflective stuff to be able to hand out. And, um, I mean, uh, any opportunity we can to, you know, as I said, to, to provide something that hopefully somebody would use would be great. I know, um, Nick and I sat down, I think it was last week. To do something with the e-newsletter where we put some information down, you know, talking about reflective gear and, you know, riding bikes and driving and pedestrians and. And said, hope, hopefully, you know, just a continual message will, you know, sink in somewhere along the line.
That's fantastic. So if we had, you know, a box of that stuff that people could come in and pick something up at the township building. Or if when the officers are in the schools doing their walk rounds, if they can ham things out, um, to that and for the parent, you know, just. Whatever you think, if you think you need more, looking that we've, you know, we've spent the full budgeted amount, um, last year. I was thinking you might need.
Just to clarify that, that is projected. I, I just ran the numbers and we're actually about, at about half of, of our budgeted amount in that line item for this year. So. I think the projections are a little bit overestimated. I'm not sure if Sergeant Hendrick has. Perhaps some additional things that he's planning on purchasing, but. I, I, the, the amount should be okay. I think it's fine the way it is. Uh, if we go over it a little bit, it's fine. We can, you know, we can make up for it, but. As Chief Albright noted, I did, um, communicate with Sergeant Hendrick and I think he was already in the process or perhaps he did already. Find some, uh, relatively unexpected, inexpensive reflective gear that we could, um, we could hand out. And then hopefully next year we'll be able to do. Not just the bike rodeo again for the younger kids, but also we'd been talking about perhaps a more, um. Concerted effort to reach out to adult cyclists, either in a themed coffee and conversation or, or a special function. We had a. Kind of a virtual event in twenty twenty that was very low. It, it was not very well attended. I think we had perhaps one. Uh, attendee at that event. And so, you know, that, that, but of course that was a virtual bike event. So what do you expect, I guess? And, uh, hopefully we could do something a little more involved that gets more interest next year.
Yeah. I mean, it's so difficult. Um, you know, you really have to bring this stuff where people are and maybe working with, um, CRPA where they go out and meet. There, there's something where they meet the bikers and they give them coffee or something, you know, and, you know, working with them on that, uh. Might be something we could talk about. Um, so thank you so much for that. And then I just had one other thing, and this is, um, on page one ten. This is under batteries. Um. So I wanted to talk about speed signs and I love the speed sign on Plainfield Road and I had noticed that the battery went out and then it was back. So, um, I'm so happy about that. Yeah. Yes, that was awesome. And then, um, so I'm wondering about the life of the batteries if they're, um. You know, what's that situation? Is there some kind of, because I know whenever we put those signs up, the batteries just die pretty quick. So is there some. Better battery system for those things? And then also, um, we had talked before about maybe an additional one of those that we can, uh, keep cycling all those signs. In and out of different places. So do you think that we need another one of those signs? Cause we hadn't added, um. To my recollection, last year, I don't think we added another one. Um, okay. And then, so do we need an additional one and. Uh, talk to me about battery life.
Right, right now we have four of those speed signs. Um, and what, what the, 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 ideally the best system of, of for them would be powering them, whether it was a. Fixed location with either solar or electricity. And unfortunately, a lot of places, they don't have that option, or I'm going to guess there would be a, you know, a cost associated with running. You know, power to that specific location. Um, so that, those would be the two best options. And as far as the batteries, the cold, when it starts getting cold, we, we replace the batteries every year. We, we replace them. Um, but when it starts getting cold out, they, they, some of them go quicker than others. And as I said, kind of, won't say difficult, but. We have it, we have a, um. Dry erase board out that shows their locations and when we change the batteries, but. I admit, as I said, sometimes I know I have one of the signs and I get doing other things. My, mine is the one on Plainfield and I. You know, the day, you know, a couple of days pass and I go, oh yeah, I gotta go out there and check that thing. And. And lo and behold, there's a little battery signal in the lower right-hand corner telling me it's time to change. So I got it changed today.
Chris, I have a question since we're talking about, um. Those, they're, they're kind of movable, uh, speed signs. Do they make them so that they can accept power from like, uh, a solar panel?
Yes. Yeah, they have different ones that are solar panel. I'm not sure. I, I've seen those mainly at fixed, fixed locations. But I, I think they could be moved, um, but I, I, I'm not one hundred percent certain. I, I haven't looked too much into that.
Yeah, seems almost like that would be ideal because then you could put it anywhere and you'd have your electric right with you. And it seems like a, a panel would be able to, one panel, good sized panel should probably be able to do that. So that for future, if you ever get another one, that might be a good thing to look into. I don't know if what you have could be retrofitted for that, probably to be costly.
Yeah. And then, and then I, I'm not sure either, but I, I know one of the things we also do is we put them on just right below the speed limit sign itself. So we would probably have to have some other standard that's movable or placed close by. Cause I'm going to guess then the solar panel would block the speed limit sign and that wouldn't do us much good either.
That's true. But that's a, that's a thought, you know, whenever we have to replace one to see what. If that's even an option, and then it would save you guys from having to think about running out and checking while you have it in that location, it would just last as long, you know. However, many weeks you keep it there and then move it somewhere else. So. Yeah, that was my, that was my last question.
And I know for, what's it next? For twenty twenty-three for the CIP, we have the trailer-based radar sign. Um, in the CIP, so that's something that we'll have, um, you know, moving forward. And we'll be able to look at that. As, you know, solar and how it works and gives us time to do a little bit more research with, with it. Before we purchase it.
That's great. Yeah, exactly. Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Chief, I'm going to pile on a little bit here and I'm going to ask, I'm going to continue with the line of questioning about, uh, the speed. Uh, kind of signs, the trailer in particular. So I'm recalling fuzzily that we discussed the idea of a dedicated one of these for Pine Grove Mills. Because of the atrocious problem with speeding there. I cannot remember what was said by staff in response to our thoughts that there could be a dedicated one. But for some reason I remember something like, no, it can't be a dedicated one. It's got to be moved around the township. Am I misremembering? Am I embellishing? What, am I just wrong?
I, 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 I think some of the discussion may have been that I know, I know we have other problem areas. You know, you pick. Whitehall Road that if we say, hey, we're going to buy one for Pine Grove Mills. Are the residents that live along Whitehall Road to deal with the speeding too, going to say, well, why can't I? Type thing. So, so I mean, that's the movable makes it each shares it a little bit, but, um.
So if we arrange the budget in a manner, say like, for example, the Northland area study. If we said, uh, we have budgeted like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or something for, for, for that. Um, so if we said, we're going to buy one of those trailer sign things with that money and it's going to stay within the Northland area. That would make, that would make sense, right? Because it comes out of that budget. If we had the Pine Grove Mills small area plan and we said, okay, we're going to do the same thing with that plan that we did with the Northland area plan and we're going to. Say y'all can go ahead and use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That is relevant to this plan right here. And there's a lot of speed concerns in that plan. They're going to buy a trailer sign that's dedicated to Pine Grove Mills. Does that make sense in terms of what you would say to other residents or no?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have, I mean, even, even if you, as the board decided, we want one in Pine Grove Mills right now, then that's the way it would be.
Okay. I'm trying to be fair because really, I mean, no place else in the township can legitimately say that a car was going so fast that it ended up in the creek. Okay. Other than Tiger Mills. That's the only place in the township that gets to say that. Steve, you had your hand up.
Uh, yeah, the one thing in previous discussions in the past we've had, uh, as far as like a permanent sign. Is people tend to stop seeing them. You know, the, part of the effectiveness of the sign is you see that flash up your speed. But when they're always in the same place, they've become part of the background. And people tend to not pay attention to them anymore. So I think that's the advantage of moving around. Now a trailer that moves around the different spots within an area would, would have, not have that. But I, I know. Uh, in the past, though, that was one of the arguments Diane gave us, uh, you know, we talked about like ten years ago. Putting up permanent ones at a couple of places. She said, you know, the, they tend to, to just become part of the background after a while.
I've got a, an awful lot of anecdotal evidence, uh, that coming out of Lamont that says the opposite. That little sign that goes with the red and blue, I see the person in front of me jump on their brakes to bring it down to twenty-five. When they see the flashy, flashy, flashy. I don't know if they think that maybe there's a police officer somewhere nearby that's going to get them.
But differently, yeah, because those didn't exist at the time we were talking about before too.
So, and that's.
It's just, it's very effective in Lamont. It's so effective that it's aggravating to me. They really bring down the speed limit to twenty-five. Um, so some thoughts. Okay, um.
One of the things I was just going to share real quick is the, uh, we, one of our signs has the red and blue lights, but because it is battery operated. We want to talk about something that kills that, uh, uh, speed device pretty quick. That's what'll do it. Um, especially at different times we've had it setting in the areas like Pine Grove Mills or Whitehall Road where we have a lot of speeding cars. It's going off all the time.
So battery draw is a measure of speeding on the roads. Interesting, interesting. Um, I think the Lamont one must have a little solar panel because it's always working.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And that's the one with the big price tag. Tiny trailer.
Yeah.
Big price tag.
It's.
And if we wanted, if we wanted to do something like that and dedicate it to an area and utilize the budget in the way I'm talking about. It wouldn't then come out of the police budget. It would come out of like public works where, or planning or wherever those are located. And then the, but the police could still manage it for them.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks. Pam.
Yeah.
Pam, you.
Were you, were you going to say how much they are, the, the ones with the solar panel?
The, the trailer based ones, the last time I looked at them were thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars in that range.
And without the solar, it's what?
I, as you say, I can't remember what, what they were. I just know that that's what the unit was and they were sold. So.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. I think that about does it for police, um. And we should be ready to move on to fire protection.
Thank you. So I'll cover these, um, pretty quickly here, since many of them come right out of the COG budget. Fire protection starts on page one fifteen, uh, of your budget document. And as you can see, under the. Uh, CR COG fire operating contribution, that's come down based on the COG formula. Uh, by about, uh, almost eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, the, the board has, um, recently, uh, appropriated allocations to support. The Warriors Mark and Port Matilda Volunteer Fire Companies. These are two, uh, volunteer fire stations. That provide service largely to the west end of the township. I've essentially presented those to remain the same, but of course that's discretionary. And up to the board, whether you want to change that, leave it as is or reduce it. Um, I can tell you that I, I've been sending the checks. They, they rarely follow up. Somebody's cashing them. Um, I don't hear, I don't hear anything about, um, you know, whether they received it, appreciated, need it, don't need it. So I, it largely, these are just kind of, uh, standing calendar items that towards the end of the year, I. File a check request and then send it over with a cover letter to those two, uh, fire companies.
Dave, is there any way we can get, um, response numbers from those two departments?
We can, and, and we have in the past. They're very, very minimal. I mean, probably fewer than a handful in a given year where Port Matilda. Or Warriors Mark is responding to calls out in the west end. There is a little more, I think reciprocity that goes on at the regional level. Uh, but largely that's driven from Alpha to the volunteer organizations and, and not so much the other way around. But I know they provide assistance for traffic control for accident response on occasion. But it really is not a lot. Um, I, I can get specifics. Um, in fact, we have a, uh, a road worker, Matt Steele, who is a volunteer at Warriors Mark. Um, and I think he was able to get me some numbers in years past, but. I, I can check. I, I, I can tell you that when we, when the board talked about this in past years, it wasn't so much as a, a, a fee for services. It was to kind of augment or support their initiatives, given, um, you know, some thin, thinning of their, of their budget numbers that we were seeing across the board. So that's why the board elected to, to do that amount, even though, uh, the responses really, the, the incident responses were pretty minimal. Um, in Ferguson Township anyway.
But I am recalling that it specifically regard to Port Matilda. They had put out like a crisis call at some point and we responded to that. Last year.
That was EMS, but yeah, it's.
Oh, okay. I've, I've advocated for us to reduce this contribution for a couple of years now. And I would advocate that for that again, but I would really like to hear some numbers. Um, and that would be great if the chief could get us those numbers, um, before we have to make our final decisions on the budget.
I'll work on that tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
And bonus points for giving that one to the chief. So that's one fewer called. Um, so, uh, and then under four eleven seven fifty is COG, uh, fire capital for the Alpha. Uh, fire protection program. You can see that number's gone up a little bit. Um, but it is formulaic, the rate is, is the same. And then the, uh, under on the top. And then the, uh, under on the top of page one sixteen, uh, the Foreign Fire Relief Funding. Say that ten times fast is a, um, is a pass through as, as the, the board may recall. Uh, we receive the funds, um, and then in accordance with the regulations provided for under the Department of Community and Economic Development, we pass them right along uh, to the State College Volunteer Fire Relief Association. I'll pause for any other questions. If not, um, ambulance service, uh, which has kind of a similar, uh, history. While the contributions to Center Life Link and the contributions to Port Matilda EMS, I think as Mistin and he pointed out, Port Matilda, uh, a couple of years ago, um, kind of sent up an SOS saying that they really needed, uh, financial support. They were not able to pay their bills really as well it amounted to. Uh, and so the board, um, kind of stepped up to that, uh, plate and, and elected to make a contribution of three thousand dollars. A thirty-five hundred dollar contribution, uh, to the Center Life Link Emergency Medical Service Agency is kind of been a standing item, uh, for a number of years. Uh, and then Port Matilda was added afterward.
Question, Dave, on the Port Matilda narrative. It says, the board chose to reduce the amount in twenty twenty-one, but the amount of twenty twenty-one is a lot more than the twenty twenty.
Yes, I think, and and I'll have to double check on my projections here, which won't take long. So let's see, twenty twenty. It is three thousand, twenty twenty-one is three thousand, twenty twenty was thirty-five hundred and. Yeah, so that, that's tw- twenty twenty, the actual should read thirty-five hundred. Twenty twenty-one, the budget should read three thousand. That's an error.
Great, thank you. Um, can we, can we put this on the list of things to, to consider? Just perhaps another reduction. Um, I'd be interested in numbers for this too, Chief, if you can get them.
Just, uh, just an observation, we can look at, I'm not sure if we actually paid in twenty twenty.
Okay.
Everybody's memories are being jogged, Steve.
We'll know that.
Uh, I think we appro, we said we'd pay it twenty twenty, we actually sent it in twenty nineteen. Because that's when their crisis was. I think we sent it like in December.
That is correct.
Twenty twenty contribution.
Yes, we front loaded it.
In late twenty nineteen.
What are we going to do without you, Steve?
I know, that is a good question.
You better have like Wi-Fi in that van. That's Rocky Mountain call. Hello, Steve? All right, um.
It could, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, right. Uh, so that's flagged, um, for discussion and Chief will see if he can follow up on some response numbers from Port Matilda and Warriors Mark Fire, um, EMS. Now, we'll see, we can, we might be able to provide on that as well. Emergency Service starts on page one twenty-four. And that is the COG contribution to the Regional Emergency Management, um, Center or Emergency Management Coordinator and Sean Kaufman's budget. Uh, so you'll see that's got a slight increase um, over the twenty twenty-one budget number. And then the emergency, uh, can, the man, the Emergency Management Contingency Fund is capped at a hundred thousand dollars. Once that fund is reached its, its cap, which it has, uh, that funding request goes to zero until it needs to be replenished. Health and welfare right below it, um, largely, this is just a kind of a rebudgeting or the same amount and, and as was budgeted for twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is used to reimburse or to, to pay for the costs of health inspections that are done by the State College Borough Health Officer, since the township doesn't have our own, uh, health enforcement officer. We contract out with State College Borough and Brian O'Donnell hands those, handles those inspections, uh, for us. And so in that bottom number there, you can see by quarter, and I think Eric updated those numbers, they look up to date. Uh, the number of restaurant, retail, uh, health inspections that the State College Borough Health Department conducts for the township. Uh, and then that's it for public safety unless there are any questions. Okay.
Looked like it.
We continue, um, Eric, uh, is starting us off with finance, which is page seventy-five of the budget document.
Thank you, Dave. Um, as he said, the department begins on seventy-five. Um, the department includes myself and accounts payable payroll accountant, a tax collection billing and cash receipts assistant, and a purchasing assistant shared with human resources. Department process is roughly eleven thousand tax bills for the school in the township. We prepare all the billing and make all payments to vendors and employees. Manage the laser fish document, uh, management system and public forms. Prepare the financial reports for D C E D, the public, state liquid fuels and pension audits. Prepare the C I P and operating budget for administration. Assist Hinton, who is our I T provider with service tickets. Uh, prepare the monthly bank reconciliation voucher reports, treasures reports, annual insurance applications and insurance claims amongst other items. Get up to, it's. So if you go to page, I won't go into all the details of the accomplishments. We use Springbrook software for our accounting system since two thousand thirteen. I really like it. It's, um, modular system. It's, um, they constantly update, uh, Hinton prepares an update every month uh, as the software company continues to improve their system. Finance Department, um, on page seventy-eight, that's me, then you got staff. Seventy-nine is over, uh, salaries and overtime, office supplies. We don't spend a whole lot of money. Um, electronic maintenance, we do use the Keystone Payroll System, uh, which is really great. Uh, I'm really happy with it. Uh, it is a cloud-based system and their security has been really good. Um, they're constantly improving the security because they do have the keys to the kingdom as far as it goes. Uh, everybody, all the employees' critical information, so security there is really important. We use Baker Telly for the annual audit. In fact, their rate is going to be probably a little bit less next year than, than they have for this year. Dues and subscriptions, we don't have a lot. Um, I'm not going to the annual conference. They, you know, since COVID, everything's been remote. We don't have any capital equipments, uh, requests. Tax Office, that's Paula Hockenberry. She manages the tax collection, her overtime, office supplies. Um, also to note is that we split the cost of the school district for the cost of the tax office. So anything that's, that's paid, yeah, via the tax office, other than bonding, which they pay a percentage of. Now, we split fifty fifty. So any of the contracted services with R B A, which R B A is a local company that actually does um, earned income taxes for the mo, a lot of the state or many counties in the state. They also do tax collection software for, uh, real estate taxes, which we use our system and it's, uh, it's cloud-based, it's, it's, it's actually pretty good. See, any questions on finance or tax? Okay, um, debt service, interest and taxes on page one forty-six. One forty-six, we pay. One forty-eight. One forty-eight, we, we pay a small, uh, amount of interest on, on money that we hold from developers. And they're have to be held in interest-bearing accounts, so when we release the money, we pay interest on those items. And following that on page one forty-nine, get into, uh, employer taxes. Social Security, that's our township share of Social Security Medicare taxes and unemployment insurance. On pension expense, that includes both the M M O for the police pension and the non-uniform pension. So that money gets transferred from the general fund over to the different pension funds. And anything that's left over is paid back to the general fund, so we, because we prepay the non-uniform com- part, com- portion of the, of the tax of the, uh, pension expense, and then the state reimburses back in typically late in September. So anything that we get late September that we can refund back to the township that we've already paid into it. By law, we have to pay the police pension fund first and then anything that's left over gets sent to the non-uniform pension. Following that is insurance and risk management. This includes general liability and property insurance and broken down by type. We use, continue to use Penn Prime Not Profit Cooperative for this coverage. Um, they're competitive. They've been really good with us, uh, over the years. Including workers' compensation, which is on page one fifty-one. Continue, for twenty twenty-two, the big issue, and we don't know where this is going yet, is crime insurance. Well, not necessarily crime insurance, but cyber insurance. Um, there's, with all the hacking that's been going on, the health insurers are reluctant to give coverage for that. So, uh, we're working with Penn Prime to, and we are Ferguson is well ahead of the curve when it comes to being proactive in cyber security. Uh, but we still have to work with our, there's been a lot of changes with insurance companies getting claims and that we have to continue to be proactive in this area so that we can get coverage and not pay an excessive amount for coverage. Can you, can you, on health insurance, um, is a large item. You can look at, uh, page one fifty-two at the very top. Looking at nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for health insurance. In a way to mitigate some of those costs, we provide a twenty percent rebate or, or a payment to the employees that choose to opt out, that have other insurance. We will not allow people to opt out that don't have other insurance coverage, but we'll pay them twenty percent of the cost of the insurance coverage they would have had in, um, over the years that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, just to, to expand on that a little bit, so this is a, this is actually a significant win-win for the township. It's a, and the employees, it's a benefit that we offer. As Eric pointed out, if a spouse is covered or, you know, they're able to secure coverage in another way, they can receive this opt-out. So in lieu of paying, uh, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a family plan, the employ, which would be obligated by the township to cover that employee, they then have that incentive to go on their spouse's plan and then they get a little bit of an extra cash payout in, in lieu of that. So it keeps our risk minimal or, or lower than it otherwise would be because we have fewer participants in the plan, keeps our premiums more stable, uh, or, or lower because our, our exposure isn't as high. And, um, and then it also provides that, that little bit of incentive. So we've, we've made that available for several years now. And, uh, and as it says in the narrative, we have a little over a dozen, about a dozen employees that participate in that who would otherwise be getting coverage for them and their families or, or them and their dependents uh, at a, at a much higher cost to our insurance premium per year.
Thank you, sir.
Hmm.
Um, just, uh, also to note that, that nine hundred and ten thousand dollar is the full amount of the payment for twenty twenty. It does not consider re, any rebates or refunds that we got. For example, for twenty twenty, um, the refund we received in twenty twenty-one was over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, being a nonprofit and it's a cooperative, we've, um, saved any, any re, any overages are returned to us. So it's, it's been very beneficial to the township. In addition, uh, we also give a a five hundred dollar stipend, I want to call it, to those that are eligible saving sick time and, and it goes into our retirement health savings account. Typically, I am budgeting for ten people for twenty twenty-two. Um, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve people. And, uh, it's another incentive that Dave was talking about, to try to save sick time. Remaining items are dental, vision, uh, life insurance, disability. A, a small amount of, uh, any, some of the refund that goes back that we get from the health insurance goes back to the employees for their portion and some of it goes into employee wellness to try to improve employees', uh, health. And then falling down to contingency, uh, there's a market adjustment, uh, put in related to the market study from last year that was not in place. Some employee service awards for a length of service and then there's twenty-five thousand that was put in every, pretty much every year for those items that are not anticipated yet, uh, needed to be budgeted.
So just to elaborate a little bit on that, uh, the way you'll see salaries and wage adjustments and this has always been the case is that it'll appear as a line item under this contingency fund, but you'll see our projecteds are always zero. That's because when we apply them, we actually apply them to the individual salary accounts that are associated with whatever the increase is. So somebody whose annual salary is fifty thousand dollars and they're entitled or they receive a cost of living adjustment and a merit adjustment, their salary account at the end of the year will be fifty thousand plus that adjustment. So this line item will show as a zero dollar item, but we are appropriating those dollars in their relevant accounts and that's just a generally accepted accounting prin- principle that we follow. Uh, the uncommitted reserve is just as it's described, but it's really, uh, just kind of a guard against anything significant that may come up over the year. We rarely, although you'll see there's an appropriation in here for twenty twenty-one, we rarely actually assign cost to that. That's sort of similar to the salary adjustments where you might see those costs, if they are uncommitted, unexpected, applied to a more relevant account in accordance with their expenditure. Um, for example, if there's a large vehicle part that we have to purchase, that may be supplemented by this uncommitted reserve, but it wouldn't necessarily appear as an expenditure in that account. The only times we'll make a, a, an expenditure hit that, uh, specific account is if it's completely unusual. Um, uh, like, uh, pur- purchasing, um, I don't know. I think, well, I'd have to look and see what we spent the, the money on this year. Uh, but anyway, that's, that's kind of our, our process for allocating funds to that account and, and how we uh, kind of consider it. Um, oh, we bought some material for the United Way Day of Caring. Uh, I mean, that's not right. That was last year.
That would be a good example, though. We, we wouldn't have budgeted for that.
Right. The COVID banners, which were reimbursable, the, the State College, that, that's what came out of this account. So. The COVID banners, which were reimbursable, the the state college, that that's what came out of this account. So in twenty twenty one. The mascot State College banners. So there's questions of finance, yeah.
I my understanding was that that was going to be paid for by Penn State, the mask up State College banners.
No, the banners were purchased through the the university's. Purchasing of them. So we kind of bought them in a group, but we we used CARES Act funding, which was reimbursable. To acquire the banners, but they came, they were bought by the township. I think that's correct. Centris actually coordinated that. Purchase, but that's how I recall it.
Thanks. Yeah, that's probably how I got the idea that Penn State said that they were gonna pay for them because they were doing the buy, I guess. Thanks. Okay, right.
One one more item in our fund. On page one fifty four. It breaks down the different funding from the general fund to the different capital funds typically. Cap reserve fund, transportation improvement fund, park improvement fund and pension funds. Just a a note on the summary page on Fund thirty four. There's a transfer out of the non-uniform plan that will be netted. With revenue for twenty twenty two, since we did that with the general fund, meaning that we netted the expense rather than considering a. Transfer out and then because the transfers out to one fund and answers into the rest of the fund should balance. So. It doesn't affect the bottom line. We're just going to change that to reduce the revenue in Fund sixty five. And that's all I got for that.
So am I interpreting correctly? Transfers to Park Improvement Fund. So we're transferring from the general fund to the Park Improvement Fund. We're not taking that, all that regional money that's that's sitting there in that in that account and transferring it to this.
We used up as much as we can that was available from the regional park.
Okay. On to that isn't that Halbert, whatever, Leser Halbert money that, okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Pam.
I have a question. Was back on page one forty seven. The adult sector contribution. How come that's going down?
That's a cog.
Yes, so we're talking about our, yeah, okay, so.
Contribution.
One forty seven called contribution. Okay.
That's probably because of lower participation, because there's a use component to that. Is that accurate, Dave?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. The the senior center is it's formulaic. It's based on the cog formula. So whatever their expenditure item is, is applied is there whatever our obligation is, is a function of what their proposed expenditures are. So that goes down, as does our our percentage.
That makes sense, too, because it's at the mall and that's not really that convenient for a lot of Ferguson.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
And with call, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, looks like, looks like that's it. Thanks so much, Eric.
We kind of bounce around a little bit with the cog budget. Our first expenditure item is on page eighty four of your document. And it's cog administration. You know, again, I'll kind of go through this pretty quickly because these were all covered in the cog budget discussions. You'll see the adjustments that apply to cog for the township share of cog administrative expenses. Right there under four oh six dot five thirty. Cog building capital. That amount is is described in the next line item, so slight increase in that expenditure. And then the cog contingency fund for building repairs. Is covered under four oh six dot five thirty three at the top of page eighty five. And you'll also see there's a an increase in that projected as well. So. Those items are reflected. Accordingly, Center Region Planning Agency and the Center Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. Which commonly go hand in hand with one another, at least in the budget, are shown on page one twenty two. Note the increase in the Regional Planning Agency. Contribution based on the twenty twenty two cog budget. Same is true for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the CCMPO, which is a smaller increase. About four hundred dollars, just over four hundred dollars. And then moving right.
I I actually I cannot get past this section without commenting on my concern of the continuing increase in cog costs. I just have to comment on it. There's a huge jump in administration and in CRPA. And it's concerning to me. Additionally, I know it's really I can be commenting on this at the cog budget, which I did. So it's kind of. Probably not that useful to be commenting now, but I just, I also am. Concerned about the idea that we're adding in, you know, the climate action and adaptation. Program into cog without actually calling it a program. I'm in favor of it, but it, you know, it's being wrapped into the planning agency, which has the regional and the local, and it's somewhat confusing and. We're obligated to participate in planning. And I understand that's probably why that was lumped into planning. But. You can't ignore the jump in costs of cog. And the fact that we have very, very little control over that. And so I just make that comment and that observation. In terms of adding new staff, we're adding a lot new staff in the cog. Again, where we have very little control over it. I know we share that cost, but it's. Definitely definitely a cost, and I would really like to see some projections of. Anticipated increases in the future for our planning purposes. Thanks.
Transit is next, starts on page one thirty eight. CADA is operates under a different fiscal year than. Most of us do, we as a January, January fiscal year, they run a June to July fiscal year. Or excuse me, July to June fiscal year. So their current operating budget will. And or their current budget cycle is or fiscal year will end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. So the way we itemize these for our budget purposes is we have the third and fourth quarter payments. January and April of next year. The third and fourth quarter of their fiscal year, and then the first and second quarter of their upcoming fiscal year payable in July and October of twenty twenty two. So those items are reflected in the budget there. The townships, the municipalities have a federal or an obligation to fund a percentage of. Transit in order to allow the transit authority to access the additional federal funds that they need to operate. And so that's covered typically when the board adopts a resolution approving the CADA funding appropriation. And each year more in line with their fiscal year and their budget cycle. And then we always get a chance to hear from the CADA executive director and or finance director. About their their budgets and what they're proposing for increases in local share. Parks and Recreation, and this is just specific to cog. We'll talk about Fund thirty four a little bit later this evening. That begins on page one thirty nine. So just the next page after the Transit Authority. You'll see our annual contribution to the Park and Recreation operating expenditures have gone or been down from four hundred and sixty one thousand to four hundred and fifty six thousand, using rough numbers. Cog Aquatics Contribution. So. Eric, I don't know, you're probably better to describe this account than I am and how that fluctuates in time. But that's proposed at zero dollars in twenty twenty two.
Yeah. If if their operations fees. If equal or exceed their actual cost, we get charged nothing. We only get charged for the cost of the capital for redoing the pools.
Thank you.
And typically, the expectation is that should be zero because. Operations are supposed to be covered by fees in the aquatics program. But because of COVID, that wasn't the case, and so we had to make the difference before.
And same in the next line item, four fifty two dot five thirty two. That's cog aquatics capital contribution. So there's what Eric talked about a moment ago with the township's subsidizing of capital. Improvements made to the pools at Welsh and Park Forest. Again, line item right out of the cog budget. Millbrook Marsh Nature Center, which begins right.
I have a question for Steve, actually. Steve, do you remember in the finance meeting when I was asking about the revenues from the pools? And I asked about concessions revenues, and I asked what budget it went to. Didn't it? Doesn't it go into the opera? I forget the number, the the large slushy fund of the parks operating.
I think so.
Instead, instead of staying within the pools budget.
The pools operating is separate. The pools operating, I think, is just the fees. Or annual passes and.
Right.
Daily admissions. And I think everything else goes to Park and Rec.
Right. So if they're supposed to be covering what they can of operations and capital with their revenue, shouldn't that concessions money go into that pools budget?
That's a question for whoever's on Finance Committee next year.
Thank you.
No, I. I think the 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 generally. The. The concessions is pretty small, and I think they just sort of, that's just sort of slipped into. A. They started selling them as a service. And really never accounted for them within the parks operating. I think last year was the first time we had to pay anything on the parks operating. They generally cover that with the.
The pools operating.
The pools operating, as a matter of fact, usually some of the pools operating ends up going into pools capital even.
Right. I guess I'm just sort of thinking ahead with this. Thought that we're gonna get the truck and that's gonna serve, and that's gonna be a big moneymaker. I think that if that's gonna be the case, and now that truck. It was gonna be under parks, the big slushy parks budget, but now it's gonna be under the pools budget.
So now it's the other way. It was going to be under the pools budget because. They were going to put a concession standard at the pool, and then they talked about changing to a truck, and they kept the but fund the same place. That it's, that's gonna be completely rethought, though, because it's it's gonna have to be a business plan proposal coming in. So I, but yeah, something to keep an eye on where the where the funds are going when that does come forth as a proposal.
Right. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Dave.
Sure. So under parks, and so then below that, at the middle of page one forty starts Millbrook Marsh Nature Center. There are operating and capital contributions. That are associated with that, and then they kind of sandwich the Center Region Parks Capital Contribution. Which you could see under line item four fifty two dot five thirty four, all out of the the cog budget. And then down under the item of four fifty three, actually, I don't know, I get ahead of myself here. Well, we can cover spectator recreation. Just quickly here before we move on to, and then I'll move into library. So spectator recreation, four fifty three dot five forty, community contributions. This is a allocation the board has typically made year to year. And it funds requests for donations that are made by. Commonly by nonprofit organizations that run events in town or have other presence in in the township. So Discovery Space has in the past asked us, asked the township for an appropriation. Fourth Fest, People's Choice, First Night, everything that's kind of some examples that are described there in the narrative. These, in order to access these funds, organizations submit requests to me for the funding. Then goes on a consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors, and then if you approve the consent agenda. It's essentially approval in in those cases of the request for funding, I write a check. And that's how that operates. So. We haven't seen as many of these, I think, but the request is for the contribution to remain the same. I think largely because of the pandemic, some of the events that took place. Were perhaps either not as elaborate, didn't need as much funding or didn't take place at all. But our projections in twenty twenty one are a little bit better than budget. But I I think we'll have kind of be back to more normal in twenty twenty two. Nothing under parks operating expenditures or advertising, those would just be tailing expenditure items because there was a. Budget amount in twenty twenty one, once that disappears, essentially, those will be covered under Fund thirty four.
Dave, I have a question. About actually the agendas and what we're doing right now. I'm realizing that I don't see, so we're under the heading of Center Region Council of Governments.
Right.
We're talking about Ferguson Park stuff now, and I don't actually see any place where we're gonna talk about fund. Oh, oh, I see it now. The Park Improvement Fund is under Small Funds. Okay, so that's good.
I just thought I would cover those two quickly while we were here.
Okay, so so just to be clear, because it's just it's confusing. For people watching and even me still. So the Township Parks Operating Expenses, that is not a cog budget. That's a township budget. And I'm confused. I just am recalling that. There was a repair to a slide in one of our parks. I'm sure there was money that came out of the Fund thirty four for that because of the. Maybe I should, it wouldn't have been thirty four because. My recollection from the email that Dave Modricar and I exchanged, we had was that. That was actually repaired by Public Works. And that it was a materials and time, time and materials. And but it's not coming out of operating park operating expenses. So it's coming out of public work somewhere then?
It would come out of Fund thirty four. We have a contingency, a Playground Safety and Update Program line item budget. In that case, it was just material. The time would be our own. Road crew, so it would be more of an opportunity cost than an actual cost. It would be they they can't spend. Time doing something else or whatever, you know, that that amounts to, but it wouldn't be an actual expenditure. It wouldn't be something that hits our books other than salary. So, yeah, these these two accounts, four fifty four dot two twenty and four fifty four dot three forty. Have been moved over to Fund thirty four, but in order to account for them, once that. Trailing budget item drops off, those accounts will disappear entirely. Everything, and these are, these are to advertise. The operating expenses. I I really, we haven't used that in the past. I'm I'm not sure what that would really account for. Wouldn't account for any repairs or any labor or expenses or anything like that. Advertising would be primarily for any legal ads, perhaps to the Parks Committee, any special meetings that they might have. Any posting of parks with any kind of special notices or anything like that. So there might be a small line item, but expenditure out of that account, that would be something that would appear under Fund thirty four, which sentries will will cover a little bit later on tonight. So there's no zero dollars proposed budgeted for those two accounts in twenty twenty two.
Okay, but. I guess it's a little misleading because we spend a lot of money and time on park operations. And it's been a real struggle to capture that. And so like then seeing the zero and the zero here, it's almost confirmatory that we don't spend that. Time and money, but. But it's, it is either coming out of Thirty Four or the Public Works budget.
Right, so any time, any labor that we spend. In parks is gonna be allocated to our Public Works Road Worker Salary Line Item. Which we can, you know, we'll get into a little bit on Thursday. Um, we would not. Take a portion of that and dedicate it to operating expenses under a separate account for parks. Um, we do and we are improving our tracking of time spent engaged in different activities. Uh, with the road crew, how much time they spend, you know, crack ceiling, winter operations, et cetera. So that does allow us to segregate those cost centers a little bit, primarily for the purposes of. Reporting and asset management, uh, you know, capital management, human resource management. Uh, but we still take them all out of the same account, which is Public Works Salary with the Stormwater Fund. And you know, some of the other funds, we have portions, percentages of the salaries that are divided out. Uh, appropriately, but those are kind of estimates based on where we project those uh those hours are being spent.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome. Um, so. Back into the cog motif on page one forty six, so you gotta kind of scroll past trees a little bit. And that's a preview of what's to come on Thursday. Page one forty six starts in uh Library Services. Again, formulaic, um, you can see the slow uh library operating contribution at four hundred and ninety two thousand. So a fairly significant increase over twenty twenty one. And uh the capital contribution also had a slight increase, just under seventeen hundred dollars, based on the twenty twenty two cog budget. Um, and then senior citizens, I think we already covered that on page forty seven, the active adult center contribution. We get into natural resource conservation on Thursday. Uh, a little bit, so I'll save that. Uh, for the two, well, I suppose I could cover them very quickly. The um. And those are requests, so Spring Creek Watershed Commission has asked the partners to up their contribution a little bit this year. Uh, so I budgeted for what that request is, uh, going from seventeen sixty nine to nineteen oh one, not a huge jump. But a little increase over twenty twenty one and the Spring Creek Watershed Monitoring Project that the township's been a partner in. Has uh remained the same. I think that takes us to the end of the cog. Budget and into special revenue funds unless the board has any questions.
Lisa. I just wanted to make a comment on the transit budget on page one thirty eight, which is increasing over last year. Uh, I just wanted to comment on the cuts that we're still facing and, you know, this is another one that we. Really can't control, you know, we need to make this contribution and I just. There's just a level of frustration in where these cuts are being made. I don't see them being made close to downtown or campus where there are. Alternative ways to get to, you know, their destinations that are right around there, there's short. Short um routes aren't being cut so much as these ones out in our direction where there are not bike paths and um. Pedestrian accommodations that are allowing for non-car transportation. So it's just um a frustration I wanted to. Um, express and, you know, again, there's little we can do about it here in the budget, but it's just something we need to continue to look at and look for alternatives. Um, to those uh those cuts in the services areas uh as we move into next year.
Really, I share your frustration, such a good point. Our contributions are increasing and our services are decreasing. It's it's difficult, it's difficult, yes. Pam.
Um, yeah, I, since Dave mentioned the Spring Creek Watership Coalition. Um. Is there anything, uh, we were a part of of the One Water Plan, is there anything happening with that? What's what's going on with that and do they need any funding or? Does anybody know anything about that?
Yeah, I'll say it's probably a topic of discussion for another time cuz it's a little bit of an in-depth topic, topic, but so far. The way the commission is approaching the One Water Plan is that it's completely voluntary. Um, so there. And there's a lot of funding involved that hasn't been requested yet. Um, so.
I was wondering.
That's kind of in a nutshell.
It's getting dragged out.
Well, I mean. It's it's gonna be voluntary, so they're gonna wanna spend millions of dollars on a plan that there's no obligation to be compliant with. So one immediately questions the value of that, so we'll we'll leave it at that um for now. Um, yeah.
We'll talk about it another time.
Yeah. Um, looks like we're on to small funds, Steve, uh, and that's you.
Uh, sp- special revenue funds, uh, yeah, so they they will start up on page one fifty six and.
Oh, sorry, I skipped a section, thank you.
Uh, so page fifty six is the Streetlight Fund. Um, Eric, you wanna take us through that?
Sure, thanks, Dave. Um, the Streetlight Fund. Is actually in a deficit and it's it's uh not that big of a deficit, but we have to increase the rate. Uh, of the assessment so we can eliminate that. Deficit over two years, we're looking to raise another six cents per linio foot. And as far as costs uh go, they include the electric service for the lights and the maintenance for the township own lights. Not a big fun there. As far as the next fund, hydrant fund, the State College Borough Water Fund Authority, this is page one sixty. Continues to increase the hydrant rates resulting in a required increase in the township assessment rate. Um, I did call the authority and they're requesting an increase of seventy two dollars per hydrant per year. That's uh that adds up when we have over three hundred hydrants. So we're we're gonna require um. A five cent increase in per linio foot. Um, in the assessment, the stabilize eliminate the the funding deficit deficit again over two years. What else we got? General Obligation Fund that starts on one seventy three. And also, just so you guys know, there's bookmarks. If you have access to bookmarks, you just click on the bookmark, take you right to it. One seventy three, this fund is uh required to segregate our payments for debt service. From other. Funds of the township, so for twenty twenty four, we're gonna transfer four hundred thousand from the gen- the general fund. To the tra- uh to the General Obligation Fund to pay the twenty nineteen bond issue. And interest and principal are separate. And there's a five-year look ahead in the tables for each of the interest in in that in uh principal. Uh, to help you see what's coming up. And that's it for those two, three. So if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Yeah.
Patty? Um, I I have a question about the Streetlight Fund. Do we have the ability, much like me as a homeowner, I can call, what is it, P A Power Switch? To choose who I want to be my electric provider? Does the township have the ability to do that or do we just? Have to go with what West Penn gives us?
So we um, most of our, well, the the answer, I guess, for this specific application is is really. Complicated, so the um, our our streetlights, a m- a majority of them, a a large majority of. Not all of them are operated on a on a rate tariff, so we pay West Penn a fixed rate. And and they're, in exchange for that, they provide service and they also maintain the lights. Um, a few years ago, they upgraded all of our lights from high-pressure sodium. Get a few mercury vapors to LED. And so that was all wrapped into their tariff structure, and that's a ten-year agreement. So for those lights. We're on, we're on their rate, we we're kind of at the mercy of their tariff structure. For the ones that we own and the utility service to the township facility and our our traffic signals. We do have the ability to shop out our electricity generation. Um, distribution is, of course, uh, this um, West Penn. But um, we participate in the Municipal Utility Alliance, which is very cool sounding name, but is not nearly as cool as it sounds. Um, in that we get our power through constellation and we offset that with green renewable energy. Re- uh, Rex Renewable Energy Credits. So we have some more flexibility in the streetlights that we own and those are the ones that are metered. Um, and they are Havershire Boulevard. Um, I don't know, Dave could tell you the exact locations of all of them, but we, well, some of the newer ornamental streetlights that we've have and and we've had installed. Are uh that we have meters and cutoffs installed and we actually just pay those out of our electric bill. Uh, so the answer is kind of maybe, it depends on the specific streetlight.
Thanks.
Sure. So that brings us to small funds, um. And small in the grand scheme, I suppose. Uh, page one seventy five, I think we spent a lot of time talking about the. Uh, complexities of the ag preservation program and the township's involvement in it, but Fund Nineteen is our ag preservation fund. Uh, or our kind of earmarked um segregated governmental fund specifically for the purposes of acquiring ag conservation easements. So you'll see the revenue is whatever we transfer into it, which in twenty twenty two, because we are carrying a significant fund balance. We aren't proposing to do any transfers from the general fund. It does bear a little bit of interest, you'll see that reflected in the revenue account. And then under the expenditure item, uh, as Diana Griffith alluded to earlier in the evening. There are two farms proposed to be preserved, the Burkett Farm and the Miller Farm. One is twenty acres, the other is sixty two acres. So essentially what I do is apply a hundred and fifty dollar per acre allocation. Buffer that with a little bit of contingency because those acreages are estimates, they tend to usually be overestimated, so if anything, we. We see that number go down a bit. Uh, but if the township is interested in participating in the program again this year, as was noted, we. Uh, opted not to participate in the two conservation easements acquired in twenty twenty one. Uh, the amount would be twelve thousand three hundred dollars, probably a little bit less than that, but that gives us a little bit of buffer in the event that there's excess acreage that's not. Uh, uh, that's not planned for.
Dave, this is something I'm interested in talking about a little bit more. Can we put this on the list, which is knock on wood remarkably short just so far? That's wonderful. Um, I would like to explore this uh a little bit. Um, after we have some time to think about what Diana has has uh informed us about today. Um. And I did wanna actually just, if if you would indulge me, wanted to. Um, repeat back to everyone what I think I gained in understanding tonight, just so when I'm thinking about it, I'm not thinking about it in error. So. I believe what what Diana said is, once they assess the property. And have the total amount that it's worth. Then they um parse that out into um what uh what the township's gonna to give. What the county is gonna give and what the state is gonna give. So we actually have a share of that amount. We don't add on to that amount. Um. So the way I understand it is. That one hundred and fifty dollars per acre that we're giving the county or contributing toward the easement. Isn't then coming out of the county budget. And then they have that money freed up to place an easement somewhere else. So what I'm thinking is, what I'd really like to see. Is our contribution working for us? And so, for example, how I would see that happening is. If we are giving a hundred and fifty dollars per acre. But then that one hundred and fifty dollars per acre that it frees up for the county is put back into Ferguson Township Farms. And I think that's a little bit different than how it's happening now. Where uh it's happening now is we put in that hundred and fifty dollars and that frees up a hundred and fifty dollars for the county to put anywhere. They can put that money anywhere. I'd really like to see that be earmarked. And so maybe between now and when we talk about it next, we could find out from the county if that's possible. Um, if that's a possible um idea uh for them to be able to work with. Um, given that we're one of the only folks that participate in the municipal partnership program, I feel like we could kind of set the agenda. Uh, in terms of what that partnership might look like. Um, so that's one thought I had where I would be comfortable to continue contributing that money. Because right now it's it's clearly an unnecessary contribution because. If we didn't supply that hundred and fifty dollars, the the county would, the farm would be ranked, it would. Then get that money, so it's just a thought. Um, Lisa, you had your hand up.
Thanks, so are we um compiling questions for a future discussion?
Well, um, I kind of had hoped we could sort of. Conduct these meetings similar to last year where we we went through all of the budget and then at the end, kind of had a review of the items that were. Hmm, not just easily passed. Um, I think tonight there were just a few questions. Um, I've got a running list that Dave probably does too, like my questions were about uh. The. Uh, Warriors Mark and Port Matilda Fire and Port Matilda EMS. The reason I'm asking those questions is that I would like that data so we can make an informed decision as to whether we wanna give that amount. So like those two things and then the ag preservation contribution were the only things that I have on my list of things that we would wanna return to. And make our final decision. Um, and I would just envision us doing that, doing that at the end of of tomorrow's meeting, if that's possible. Um, uh, not tomorrow, sorry, uh, Thursday's meeting.
Thursday, okay, so I guess my question, you know, one thing that Diana said is that most of the preservations are occurring in. Ferguson Township, so, you know, I think that's something to, you know, maybe get numbers on and look at, you know, I think. Whether it's. Uh, unnecessary or not, I think that's the question, you know, I think that's what we have to decide, like I I don't think it is. I think it's an important contribution we make. I think it's, you know, a tangible way that we're showing our commitment to ag preservation. And we're a leader in that, but not only that, we need it more than everybody else cuz we have the development pressure that they don't, so I think knowing. You know, if if it's true or not, may not if it's true, but what the uh proportion of Ferguson Township Farms that are being preserved. Uh, against the rest of the county, I think that would maybe help answer that question of. You know, the the money that we're supplementing of the county money, then, you know, is it really actually? Helping us in the end because we're preserving so many farms. So I see your question and I think that's, you know, maybe a different. Uh, a way to look at it too, you know, is how many farms that are getting preserved are in Ferguson Township, so it's not that direct. Tie in that I I understand, you know, that we're, you know, we'd like to see, but it's um a different way, I guess, of seeing that money come back and we still get. Our uh, you know, hand in that easement, you know, in that deed agreement, so um. It's a really technically tied into it.
Yes, yes, I I appreciate that, um, Lisa, and I I also support this conceptually. It's just that I feel like there might be a better way that we can show that support and not have any of those dollars, our taxpayer dollars. Ever go to preserve a farm in Lake Worth Township or Walker Township, especially when those supervisors clearly don't share that commitment. So I I agree with wanting to support it, even though the farmers continually accuse us of not supporting them in any way. It's very frustrating, but um I guess we know the truth. Um, but then I was in interested also in. But then I was interested also in, you know, this idea that Half Moon Township, their open space preservation program counts for this like state match. And it's very intriguing to me because one, one piece of feedback I've heard from farmers in dealing with the county ag preservation program is that the county wants, and Diana said this, the county wants to preserve whole parcels, but they don't want to pay any money for the woodland. They don't want to pay any money for that. And so the farmers kind of have to eat that. And so I think that if we think about the Half Moon Township Open Space Preservation Program as a model, maybe we can keep those dollars in Ferguson Township, still benefit those landowners, offset the cost of preserving that woodland because the county won't preserve it with their money because it's not farmland, but it's necessary to preserve it as part of the easement. So it's just sort of like a brainstorm and I would of course want, you know, farmers input on that more lofty kind of program goal. But yeah, I appreciate your acknowledgement of my, my concern that that we're subsidizing the county so that they can preserve farms in other municipalities.
And I guess, yeah, and I guess just, you know, having something to screen share on Thursday that would show us the, the the actual tie-in that the township then has if we're contributing. So, you know, where is Ferguson Township written on the agreement, you know? So do we have this certain portion of the easement? You know, what is, what actually are we a party to? So
We, we do, we, we get a percentage of the easement. It's the smallest percentage of the three players, the state being the largest, the county being a significant, and then the, the township being the, the smallest, the minority owner of the easement, but we do own it. I, our, our name is on the deed or the easement that's recorded along with the amended deed that conveys the easements. So we have an interest, an actual interest in those easements. I think if, if the board were introduced, interested in doing something in the manner that Mr. Nini suggested, which is basically taking that hundred and fifty dollars per acre and applying it to the conservation easement in exchange for the whatever's reduced to the county's obligation and state's obligation being committed back to Ferguson Township in some way, or to the farmers in Ferguson Township in some way. That's probably, I, my, I, I have some familiarity with the program. I think it would be a very difficult thing to work through because you also have a state interest in there and they're, they're the major, they're the majority owners. So it's not, if it were just the two players in this where the county and the municipality, while that would still be difficult because this is state legislation and the criteria is, is prescribed in a very specific way. I think it would be easier than having that third party. What may be possible or the board might consider is in lieu of actually acquiring the conservation easement, perhaps there's additional that hundred and fifty dollars per acre is given to the farmer outside the conservation easement program entirely. You would lose the, the county would lose the ability to leverage those funds for added state aid. But in that, in that scenario, a farmer could theoretically receive more than the maximum price per acre to preserve their farm because we would just be giving them essentially a grant. And that, hey, your, your farm's being preserved, you're getting your 4,000 per acre from the county. Here's an additional supplement from the township to the tune of 150 per acre or whatever the board is comfortable with. We don't get any actual claim or stake in the easement. But the farmer would get an additional supplement to kind of augment what they're receiving from county and state aid.
So I think that would be helpful in those situations where part of the parcel is woodland because the county's not paying the farmer for that, except for they're including it in, in the, in the parcel easement. So it's, it's, it's something to explore and that's why I call it unnecessary is because the farm will still rank and it will still be preserved without our contribution. And then the other thought, Dave, like about reserving that money for the township. Like I'm not, I'm not sure that it would conflict with the state because I mean, I think it's a question for Diana because what I'm saying is that that money would still be in the program. It would still be something to leverage, but like say in the rankings right now, it's a Ferguson farm, a Ferguson farm, a Worth farm, a Ferguson farm. So those two Ferguson farms are preserved and we're, we're offsetting a hundred and fifty dollars per acre. And then that Worth farm comes up next. It's that hundred and fifty dollars per acre that we've paid that the county is then using to preserve that Worth farm. And so what I'm saying is after we've preserved those two farms and given that hundred and fifty dollars an acre, that anything that is okay, so I now see now that I'm talking through, I see how the state maybe could have a problem with that. Anyway, I would like to ask Diana if that would be a potential option because I personally would love to work through my reservations about giving this money. But I, in good conscience, I cannot, especially after being pummeled with, we're not fiscally responsible, we're not fiscally responsible. The idea of paying money for something that's going to, somebody else is going to pay for is just really rubbing me the wrong way. So I'd love, I would really love to be able to, um, to work that out and feel good about making that contribution. And then maybe the farmers actually feeling good about receiving that contribution and being thankful. That would be, that would be great too. To hear that Ferguson Township actually is doing a lot for the farmers, but so, so if we can get some of that information maybe for Thursday. I don't know if that's possible or not. If not, we can pick it up again after the budget, maybe.
Yes, I think I, I can ask Diana for her, for her insight on, on what options might look like in that regard. I kind of think I know the answer. I, I really think anything that the township were to do absent becoming a partner and acquiring these easements would just be our own program. I mean, it would be, we, we wouldn't have a conservation easement, but it might be a, a supplement. I, I, I just don't, I don't think it'll be feasible for the savings that the county and state realizes by virtue of our participation in the program to be earmarked toward the purchase of conservation easements in Ferguson Township. So if we are spending the 12,000 in 2022, they would be taking that 12,000 and saying, okay, this is going to be used to preserve a Ferguson farm at some future date. The, the program is so rigid with the LESA criteria, L E S A, not how that those farms are ranked. I, I really am confident that that is, is not going to be something that they'll be able to work with. But there might be alternatives that we can brainstorm a bit about.
Well, until I learned that Half Moon's open space program somehow fit into this whole thing, I also completely felt the way, way you're saying, Dave, but their like open space program is not the county conservation ag program. It is not the same. So I'd be intrigued. I would love to learn from Half Moon how they've got their own independent open space preservation program and it's somehow doubling as a proxy for a match for the ag preservation program. So I, that's, that, you know, they, they preserve total woodland tracks with that, that, that preservation money. I'm pretty sure it can be completely forested. So that's, I, I think that's where the key is, at least what my mind is thinking. Pam, you had your hand up and then Steve, you.
Yeah, um, I don't know anything about this, like how they're ranked or anything, but I was just wondering if I, I get what you're saying, but I also think it's important for us to be on the conservation easement. I think even if it's a small percentage, I think it's good to be on there. But I'm wondering if however they're ranked, if by Ferguson Township giving X number of dollars, if that could act as a way to push up a ranking of whatever's coming up next.
The state has a very defined process for ranking. We have.
Okay, I'm out to lunch.
It's okay. It's a valid question, but there's like a lot.
I only know that because it's come up over and over again.
I don't know anything about it at all.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot.
It would be nice though, if, if, you know, if municipalities gave money, if, if arms in their municipalities to move up a little, you know.
Though we don't need it. Our, our farms rank highly every year in this program with the criteria that in the land evaluation site assessment criteria that's in place. Because it, it, good soil is a prime factor. Developability or development interest is another one. And I think the Strickland pointed out that these are the, you know, that these are the farms that have, even though they don't take into account zoning and other obstacles to development, which are significant, these are the Yeah. So I, I mean, yeah.
It's kind of proving my point though. It's like everything we say says, we really don't have to make a contribution. They're still going to be ranked high. They're still going to be preserved. We are going to have money freed up in our budget. Anyway, we, we can continue, after we get the information, we can continue the conversation. But Steve, did you want to make your?
Well, I just had actually two comments on it. One was that even if we were to do, if it were possible, we get the information that we can allocate it, it's a shell game. And that's because our farms are going to rank so high. So if we say, okay, this has to go to a Ferguson farm, they'll just set that money, which is a very tiny amount of the total.
It is.
Decide and the next time one of our farms come up, say, okay, there it is. So I, I don't think that would do anything other than just shuffle money around, even if it's possible. The other thing is on the half moon, I would point out that I believe that's a quarter million dollar program they have. So we're talking a lot more money in half moon than what we're talking about with the 150 an acre. So that's just.
I'm just referring to the, the thing where it can count as a proxy for ag preservation. I don't understand how that works. Like they have ASA and then they preserve it with their open space thing instead of, like, that's my question. I'm hearing you about the budget differential, but, but how is that a proxy that is not part of the ag preservation program? But. What is ASA?
With the Western PA Conservancy?
I just don't know. I'm hoping Dave can give us some, some info on that. Pam, ag security area, which is a precursor to be preserved. However, of important note here, the Harner Farm that was the Harner Farm that's now a Sheets was ASA land. That had an ASA designation.
We couldn't, the, the ASA only keeps us from doing certain things. It doesn't commit the farm.
Right. It's, it's a protection from nuisance ordinance, enforcement's odor abatement requirements, noise ordinance, travel restrictions for farm equipment and on, on state and township roads.
But it doesn't prohibit development, but it is a required first step to then become preserved. So it's a, it's a, it's like a fugue state. It's like a, it's an in-between. You can go, you can either become a sheets or a farm forever. It's like all the options are there for you. Okay. Thanks, everybody for the exploration. Why don't we move on to Pine Grove Mills Streetlight Fund?
Yeah, this one's pretty quick. This is sort of a relic of time ago where it starts on page one, well, really it starts on page one or two, excuse me, 283. There we go. And it was a, it was a certain amount of money that was raised by Pine Grove Mills residents and then conveyed to the township to hold and trust. The intent was the money to be used to provide streetlights, ornamental street lighting west of, and this is just roughly, but west of Nixon Road on Pine Grove Road. So that money is just kind of sitting there. We have talked about some projects. We're doing some upgrades to, to the ornamental street lighting. We have some streetscape, we have a streetscape project that's been developed, been proposed as well. But this is specifically earmarked for the, the installation of those ornamental streetlights on Pine Grove Road and then up Nixon as well, a little bit, just kind of to the boundary of Pine Grove Mills. So there's no expenditures being proposed out of that in 2022. Even the project that we do have in the works, which is more streetscape focused is not going to be something that we would be putting in these ornamental streetlights in just yet. Soon as the opportunity presents itself, you know, we'll, we'll use these funds and capitalize on those dollars to construct those ornamental streetlights. Periodically I get pinged from some of the people who contributed to that fund all those years ago. One or two of them have asked for their money back and I've given it to them. But the, the money just sits there. I, I can't remember offhand exactly how much we, we have sitting in that fund. I'd have to look back at the fund balance, but somewhere around $20,000. Eric, you happen to know?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, actually, what the balance, fund balance is.
It's, um, well, this is 2021, so this is just a projection. Let's see, where are we here? It's, yeah, it's about 20,000. It, it's a 2021 budgeted ending balance is $20,696. So not a whole lot when it comes to putting in streetlights. But it's a, it's some money that we've been holding on to it at cruise interest and that's about it. And I think unless there's any other questions on quote unquote, small funds, we go to the one that's not going to be small, used to be small, now it's big. And that's Fund 34 and Centris was going to take us through that, starting on page 284.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah. So mostly all of the, the projects budgeted for 2022 are seen in the capital improvement plan. So there aren't too many, there aren't any surprises or additional expenditures beyond what was seen in the capital improvement plan in front of you in July of this year. But starting here with the undesignated park projects account, the same items are budgeted that in 2021 that were in 2020. It's recommended that the, the playground safety and contingency program continue with the same allocation as previous years. And to provide a little bit of background, the Township Zoning Administrator, Mr. Wrestler is also the Township Certified Playground Safety Inspector. And he receives credentials through a program sponsored by the National Recreation Parks Association and hosted by the Pennsylvania Recreation Park Society. So Ferguson Township Certified Playground Safety Inspector, Mr. Wrestler, he conducts annual playground safety inspections and presents his findings or report observations to the center region. Excuse me?
Oh, nothing. I'm sorry. I was just clearing the, the sick throat. Sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Um, so yeah, Mr. Wrestler, he conducts annual playground safety inspections and presents his findings, observations to the center region parks and recreation director, the township manager and myself, and at times depending on what the items might be, maybe a few other staff persons. And, and we, we discuss, we review and we have a discussion to determine action that generally CRPR takes on and resolves and addresses for more of the minor or fall within repairs under an umbrella of daily general maintenance. Alternatively, there are, there are times, as kind of discussed earlier, when there's perhaps maybe more immediate action that needs to be taken. For example, the slide repair at Homestead Park, which was a situation where the, the public works crew, they were able to get out and respond more quickly to alleviate the safety concern that was posed as a perceived risks or arguably a risk. And if the expenditure, you know, the, the expenditure on our end, as, as Dave said earlier, was mostly time. But the benefit was that we could get guys out there and do the repair much quicker, much more quickly than CRPR's coordination to get the playground inspector, or excuse me, the playground installer out on the side to have the observation and schedule for the repair to be done, or at least that's, that, that's, that was the, the route we took. Or at least that's, that, that's, that was the, the route we took. Um, and then at other times there, we also used in 2020 this undesignated parks, um, account for the Fairbrook Park, uh, replacement equipment, uh, playground equipment. So it's recommended that there's this contingency program, uh, and, and that we continue and carry it for any unexpected repairs that the, the township might need to absorb for 2022.
Uh, quick interjection, Centris. Um, I believe, is this the year that Jeff's, um, certification expires?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure.
He was, he was recertified last year and it's a three-year certification. I think it's the end of 2022. I think in 2023, he will need to sit for the test again.
Really? Because I've asked about that every year because many years ago, when I asked about it, um, it turned out that we are the only municipality in the center region that does our own playground inspection. And that's really a CRPR responsibility. It's something that they are doing for all of the municipalities and that would include us. And that is a significant amount of time. And then there's the cost of the certification. And I know that Jeff really, um, has a lot on his plate. Um, you know, that's one of the main things I hear from residents about time of, um, you know, permit issuance and that kind of stuff, that, that, that's, uh, really not something that, uh, is necessary for him to devote his time to. Um, because like I said, in our fee to belong to the Center Region Park and Recreation Agency, um, that those inspections come with our fee. So Harris Township, College Township, State College Borough, Patton Township, all get their inspections by CRPR. And the, that we had discussed in the past how Jeff was gonna be asked possibly by the board to not re-up that certification because that's something that we really don't need to, um, be, you know, funding, um, or paying for the time for. Um, so I'm just, I, I know I asked about it last year and it wasn't time for him to get re-certified. So I guess I'm a little bit surprised hearing that he was recertified. And I'm wondering how the board can ensure that, um, that CRPR is really taking care of that for us because we're paying them quite amount, amount of money, uh, to, to receive that service from them.
Right. So, so there's a lot going on there. Uh, the board did talk about this. The last time Jeff's, uh, CPSI certification was due to renew. Uh, the discussion was in favor of him renewing his certification for that additional three years. Uh, I do, I'm, I, I know it's not due in 2022. I'm fairly certain it's, it's up for renewal in 2023. We can have that discussion again. Center Region Park and Rec does have two certified playground safety inspectors on staff, Pam Salakengus and Jim Carpenter. Um, they do not do the same level of inspections that Jeff does. Jeff is inspecting all of our playground amenities annually. Uh, Center Region Park and Rec, I think they do some proactive, uh, inspections, but largely they're looking at issues that may have been forwarded by complaint or requested by the host municipality. It's not the same kind of proactive, um, review and assessment that we get from the zoning officer. Now, that is a, uh, that is a, um, decision, uh, of the board to make. If you want to continue to invest in that, because it is a, I, I, I think that the, I, I think the time dedicated, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to exaggerate that too much. He does do these annually. They take about a week, uh, in total, I would say not every, every hour of his work week is spent specifically on that. But I know that when he does these inspections, he tries to block off, uh, you know, approximately a week of, of, um, his schedule so that he's able to do those. It has not, a, and I can say this with a high degree of confidence, impacted our ability to turn around permit reviews. It's not interfered in, in any meaningful way with his other day-to-day responsibilities as zoning administrator. If I thought that were the case, I wouldn't be sending him out on these inspections because, uh, we have those obligations to turn permits around within a certain timeframe. We by magnitudes beat our, our time required under our ordinance and the municipality's planning code to review permits and to turn those around. So I'm not, I'm not super concerned about that. But, you know, largely the, the question for the board with the CPSI program is, is that's, is that additional, that more proactive, uh, safety assessment, something that you want to continue or is it, is, is just kind of leaving that to the park director and the, the maintenance manager, I never, I can never remember Jim Carpenter's title, uh, to do more on a complaint basis or at the request of, of us municipality. But there's nothing due for the, um, re-inspection in 2020 or the recertification in 2022.
Thanks, Dave. I think actually I understand what you're saying, but I see it differently. So, um, now that I have a little baby granddaughter, we frequent the parks of the center region, playgrounds like maniacs. We, and I'll say, you know, we spend just as much time in Spring Creek Park that we do at Cecil Irvin, just as much time at Burnell as we do at Fairbrook. Um, so if what I'm hearing is the agency that we have doing maintenance and operations, which includes playground inspections, is somehow not as good as the Ferguson Township inspections. What I would want to do is for us to put that responsibility where it belongs. So we are not funding only Harris Township inspections, but we are also funding our own inspections through our center region contribution. And then we were demanding the level of service that we could provide because indeed, because we participate in this program regionally, we could have an influence over, uh, other parks' safety as opposed to just doing it ourselves. Now, I know that that road politically and policy-wise is a much more difficult road, but the rewards are worth it because the rewards are that the whole region knows that the inspections that they are having at their playgrounds are not up to good standards and we change the whole system for the better. So I hear what you're saying and I come to a different conclusion, but I appreciate that information.
I'm not, I'm not coming to any conclusion. I, I don't think seeing things differently. My point is just, that's what CRPR is doing. We had an annual, we have an annual inspection process. If, if the decision is to lean more on CRPR to, and to have an, a more progres, proactive, uh, safety inspection program, then I, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't. I'm just telling you, that's, that was the discussion that took place the last time is.
Yeah, the reason I called it a conclusion, because the way you phrase like, do you want to have this better level of service by the zoning administrator? Uh, that's why I'm saying it's a different conclusion because I'm saying like, I want to have that better level of service from CRPR. But yeah.
I'm assuming that CRPR is gonna do their, their, is gonna continue as, as they have.
Um, Lisa, your hand's been up and I don't know if it was from the previous conversation or this one. I'm going to give you the opportunity and then I think it was Steve and then Patty. Lisa?
It was from this one. A lot of my questions have been answered, but I did want to ask, is there a requirement? And what is it for the inspection of playground equipment?
There, there is no requirement that I'm, uh, there, there are best practices that the National Playground Safety Institute, I probably don't have that exactly correct, but I know that there, there are recommendations that they, they forward. But we don't have an obligation or expectation that we, um, if anybody would impose that, it would be our reliability insurance carrier, which would be Penn Prime. Um, and they, uh, to my knowledge, I, I should know this because I'm, I'm a member on those trusts. Uh, but they, um, they don't have any expectation that we inspect these. I mean, if you think about municipalities as a whole are just ill-equipped to do this. And there's, there are very few, if any, you know, very few that have CPSIs on staff. And, uh, you know, really even fewer that have the resources that to, to contract out. You can go on their, the National Parks Service website and you could find, uh, uh, in a database, a list of these, um, people that are certified to do that, but there's not that many of them. In fact, I'd considered, um, you know, considered having, giving Jeff the ability to, and I didn't pursue this because of insurance reasons, but to contract that service out as a revenue source for the municipality. We have a few privately owned, like homeowners associations that maintain their own play equipment. And they're required by their insurance carriers to inspect these and they're not able to. So they've, they've been forced to use their superintendents, their maintenance staff to just do kind of seat of the pants inspections, what they see works, doesn't work. And that's a liability, not just an insurance liability, but it's also a safety, uh, hazard. So it's good to get these inspected. Is a year the right frequency? I don't know. Uh, but you know, there, there really ought to be, whether it be at the regional level or on staff, a, a program that we have in place that's a proactive way to address issues before they become real hazards and real problematic.
So we think that CRPR is, is, um, mainly working on a complaint-driven inspection of equipment.
I would say I know.
Well, no, let me, let me say what I've heard. I, in the cop plan and in every authority meeting forever, they say that they are doing their playground safety inspections. And the way it's written and discussed never ever, ever led me to believe that it was complaint-driven. That's my perspective.
Okay.
But I don't see the back, back workings that maybe staff might see.
So the thirty-seven thousand is really for equipment as Jeff determines that it needs to be replaced?
Yeah, that's, I, I mean, that's discretionary. It's been discretionary for me to decide whether it's something that we use this, uh, that line item for or whether it's a more significant capital investment that has to be budgeted for through the CIP and, you know, a wholesale replacement perhaps. Uh, we actually did use, um, some of this money, a significant amount for Fairbrook Park because that piece of play equipment was just in really bad sorts. So this year was prob, 2021 is probably the, the only year that I spent as much money as I did on it. Um, usually it's kind of cosmetic. It's patching up pinch points. And, uh, I think for Homestead, we used Flex Seal, um, or some.
Okay.
You know, that, but yes, that's what, when any time of recommendation, I mean, we get thorough reports with photos and, and, um, you know, recommended follow-up, uh, from, from Jeff. And any investments would come out of this line item.
Okay. I like the idea of the consistency of Center Region Parks and Rec handling this for all of the municipal parks that they are maintaining. I think that would be just a nice, um, uh, streamlined way to go about it. And like Laura said, I've never really noticed a difference in maintenance going from park to park. I've never noticed that one seems, you know, I guess, you know, just it's based on the age of the equipment, you know? I never noticed, I guess, at Fairbrook, I've mostly noticed, you know, problem areas. But, um, I wouldn't want our, um, amenities to be left unattended, you know, to not get the attention they deserve either. So. I don't know.
Thanks, Lisa. Steve?
Well, I just wanted to go back to the discussion that we did have several years ago. We basically had this discussion and my recollection of it is we came to the conclusion that we're not seeing a problem with the parks in the region in general. But we have an employee who's interested in doing this, who is willing to put the effort into getting the certification and it gives us one more look. And why wouldn't we do it? And that, that was, I mean, we can, we can, uh, you know, discuss it again. We have a different board now. But my position would still be the same, which is it's not an overly expensive thing for us to do. We have an employee who I would assume enjoys doing it, or why would he bother to keep getting the recertification? And it gives us one more, you know, a little more thorough look at it than we would have otherwise. So. So I, that's where I would stand on it, but it's, and I think that's what we came to last time. So.
Thanks, Steve. I was not in that place, but I respect that you were. Um, uh, Patty? You're muted.
I, um, I, I appreciate the discussion. I am sort of, um, along the lines of you and Lisa and it's streamlining it. And I also think what we have now that we didn't have in the past was a facilities coordinator. And it seems to me that like this title of the certification that Jeff has might be just something perfect for Lou Brumgartner as opposed to us. Um, but that's just my thought.
Thanks, Patty. That also builds on like, I've been, you know, we've got this Parks Governance Committee thing maybe happening, but it's not funded. And we've been talking about the weird division of labor, like you guys do this and you do that. And how about you do this part of this and I'll do that and, and like the idea of the maintenance of our equipment is seeded with CRPR first and foremost. Um, so really they should be the ones that are getting eyes on it so they know which parts to order. Um, so we've kind of diverged from the non-deliberative, just as questions portion of the show. Um, so I want to try to wrap it back up and get back to Centris for to go through the budget. But, um, in terms of this, uh, we've got thirty-seven some thousand dollars. We've got two questions. One is the line item, which is really our focus tonight. And then the other is this larger policy question that I think we can come back to. Um, for the line item, I would like to bring it back because I'd like to reduce it. But I don't want to deliberate on that tonight. I think it's something that we could bring back and talk about. Um, and then the other portion of the conversation I think is a really important and good one. And we can bring that back as, as maybe an agenda item. Um, like for the future in terms of strategic planning. And then in the interim, what I'd love to see, which I think would really help the board, um, is I'd love to see a connection between Jeff and zoning and his inspections and that beautiful spreadsheet that Centris started, that, it all started about sewer hookups and has expanded a little bit uh, to include playgrounds, right, and install dates and then inspection information. Um, and then that being a planning tool for the CIP. Uh, because I'm noticing that despite the fact that that lower playground, I raised a red flag on that years ago at Fairbrook with that ridiculous piece of plywood that was in there as a repair. Um, despite the fact that that was coming for a long time, we didn't have it budgeted as playground equipment replacement and it came out of that slush fund. And so this is kind of raising a flag for me that we could have better planning. If we're going to invest the money and the time in those inspections, let's get that into the planning realm, too. Um, so that Fairbrook thing should have been a red flag. Maybe the slide should have been a red flag. Um, so can the board see the inspections? And can we as a group work to utilize that beautiful spreadsheet that Centris made at every CIP meeting forever and build and build on it? So we have a great decision-making tool for how to prioritize our park projects. Um, the, those are my thoughts. Does anybody recoil in horror at any of those suggestions? Okay.
So, but for Thursday, what do you, what are you expecting of us for Thursday?
For Thursday only, let's talk about that line item and whether we want to cut it, that thirty-seven and some. Uh, just with an eye for the future of maybe trying to tighten that up and be more specific. All right. Thank you. Centris, this always happens to you when you're just trying to present the budget. Here we go.
I understand. Um, all right. So moving into the park surveying program, which is the second line item, line item, uh, with an allocation of, uh, $10,000. So this, this was carried, uh, into 2022. In 2021, staff surveyed Tom Tudic Memorial Park and is currently in the process of purchasing the, um, the, the split rail fencing and posts to soon have installed at the property corners or along the park property boundary lines. Um, staff recommends continuing this program and proposes that, um, Fairbrook Park and Greenbrier Saybrook Park, uh, be in the program for 2022. Uh, Songbird State, so a little bit of background also, it is, I, I have updated the Excel file uh, to reflect that Songbird Sanctuary Park, Haymarket Park have also been surveyed with this, uh, with split rail fencing. Uh, to reflect that Songbird Sanctuary Park, Haymarket Park have also been surveyed with this uh, with split rail fencing. Uh, already installed. Park Hills Park, Suburban Park, and I believe Cecil Urban. Have been surveyed, but the split rail fencing is not installed. So it's, it, those are, those are parks. That have been surveyed in the past within like the last five to 10 years. Uh, but for whatever reason, Ron and I spoke today on this, the uh, the fencing hasn't been installed. So those are, those are. I guess um, projects that will roll into the program in future years, or at least propose that. Uh, and just again, having these park boundary lines clearly identifiable. In a, in a very proactive manner helps staff identify and resolve issues, you know, that might. Be on the park property boundary line or call into question. It, it's easy for folks to be able to go out there and, and identify that. Um, moving into suburban park, uh. I think this was discussed during CIP, but if not, a master plan update was completed for suburban park. And was approved by resolution in twenty nineteen. Staff applied and received a grant match award in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to construct phase one. The cost for suburban park phase one construction has increased by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, township engineers just prepared. An update cost assessment showing phase one construction at seven hundred thousand there, as you can see. Now, uh, I believe budgeted in the CIP. Previously, we had five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but their more recent cost estimate. More accurately reflects the cost of bridges and increased costs that have. Um, you know, now been accounted for as we move toward uh, construction tentatively in the spring. Also budgeted as a carryover of eight thousand six hundred for permitting as well as an estimated amount for any legal engagements to establish. An offsite trail connection to connect the park trail, the suburban park trail system to the regional shared use path that connects fire boulevard to the arboretum. Uh, also part of the, the master plan for suburban park. Moving to Greenbrier Sabre Park projects. Yes?
Sorry, Lisa has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
That's okay. I just wanted to go back to that. Big increase from the CIP. So that is not a small increase. So I think um. If we could just talk about that for a little bit, um. You know, can we offset some of that? And then I wanted to ask about the line uh. That in here, the phase one construction and it has tw- two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and then seven hundred thousand, so. Are, are you seeing that's less the grant or?
Yeah. So with the grant award match uh of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would be the project down to four hundred and fifty thousand dollar total cost on the township side.
Okay. And then what about the UAJA grant or, or contribution?
Uh, so I, I do believe that that is reflected in the, in the section of revenue and that is something that now that we have. N T M has just recently come, completed their. Heard their work and submitted for the permit. So we have actual invoices that we are going through and. Extracting the costs that we can then turn over and send to UAJA per the memorandum.
Okay, so that where it says the grant, that could also say plus UAJA contribution.
Yes. Well, I mean, I think the way that we've separated is that we identified the grant award match within the line item allocation. But if you look in revenues, I believe you'll find the UAJA. Uh, I, I don't know if we're referring to it as a reimbursement. But I believe there's revenue accounted for in that section. I can look quickly if that would be.
Yeah, it's under, it's as a donation, but they're both there, the grant and the donation.
Okay, right.
Under revenue.
To answer your question directly, we certainly could update that to reflect the grant award match and the UAJA donation.
So from seven hundred thousand minus that, minus that. In our minds, the way us laypeople think about this.
Right. So we're still, we're at about a hundred and fifty thousand over what we approved in the CIP. How, how is that so far off?
Yeah, I asked the same question and it, you know, r- right now I got, I got um, two responses really. One is that the, the costs have increased over the last couple of months. Um, and, and in many ways, I, that. Our engineers could better describe, but um.
Materials.
Yeah, materials have increased. Um. We also have the bridges, like we, the, we've actually identified like the type of bridge and we were able to get more a quote for the type of specificities. And the design, whereas before it was a little bit more of a. You know, an estimate based on the type of design, whereas now there's been identified specs, if that makes sense. So. Now, as we prepare for bid, um, to send the bid out in, in early next year, we have a much more. Uh, description of what we can expect for bridges there at suburban park. So the cost, the way it was described to me, I think increased. Ah, slightly upward of a hundred thousand for the bridge, the two bridges.
So I think this is one we should revisit on Thursday. I mean, that's a. That's such a significant increase over what we discussed in the CIP that either, you know, maybe we need to. Reevaluate phase. I mean, this is only phase one A, so maybe we need to reevaluate this. Um, you know, I'm not sure, but I'm concerned about that jump. Um, and not at least I, taking a, a longer look at that.
Yeah, I'm happy to share with you the breakdown of costs. Uh, we do have a work item description with each um. Cost associated for the breakdown of line items. I do want to share with you in advance of Thursday that. Per our grant that we've been awarded from DCNR that now is actually coming from LWCF. Uh, significant changes to reduce the amenities that are in phase one and described in the grant could. Could compromise our grant award.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, understood. I'm, I'm, you know. I just, I think we need to. At, at least look at it and see what could we reduce and not lose. The grant or the UAJA donation. So I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with it without reevaluating it on Thursday.
I think any, any cha- I think the changes in scope. Would be, we, we would just have to assume that the grant from um, was it uh National Fish and Wildlife or?
Land and Water.
Wild Conservation Fund, that, 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 any, any reduction in scope is going to jeopardize that funding. What the board could do, because we do know what the, the um. Uh, the UAJA contribution is, and that's for the redesign of the channel. So if you wanted to modify the scope, my suggestion, which I, I agree is, is a valid concern. My suggestion would be that you focus, so we, we give up on that grant money. We leave it on the table. It'll be sad, I know. But what we do with the money is we look at redesigning that channel and we focus on. Uh, because we've already started the permitting process. We already sunk money into. The letter of map revision, the permitting we need from FEMA in order to enable us to improve that channel. Ms. Stevens just sent me some imagery the other day of, after a nasty storm. What it looks like out there. And it really is a stream bank that needs some attention, particularly after we get those. And those inundated uh rain events. So. You know, you could just say, well, hey, this is all we're going to focus on. And we're not going to worry about the amenities that are associated with the development of the park. Uh, we think we have the money to do it. I'm confident that it's going to come in under budget. But I get your apprehension. I get your concern. I, I agree. It was a, it was a lot of sticker shock. Uh, Centris is under direct orders not to ask our engineer for any more cost estimates from now until. Every time I walk into his office, the price goes up 10%. That's. I'm doing. And of course they're informed and, and he's, you know, typically. Conservative in his estimates, but he has valid reasoning for it. Uh, and another alternative could be that we proceed. We put it out to bid, we see what the bids come back in. And that's another opportunity for the board to discuss whether you want to make that investment or not. Budget for it, but it's not, it's not appropriate. It's not committed yet. We haven't decided anything. We could see what those, those bid packages look like because in all likelihood. And this is something that the budget doesn't really do a good job reflecting for a lot of our capital projects. Frankly, that's just the, the, the environment that, that, that local budgets are in right now, but. It is, you know, it's, it's. In all likelihood, this is going to span two fiscal years, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So we're not going to be spending all that, that big chunk of money in twenty twenty two. But we would be committed to it if we awarded a contract. We would be all in. So we'd have to appropriate that money in twenty twenty three. Whatever that carryover expenditure is, but there's a lot of moving pieces to this project. There's. Federal permitting, there's grant funding that's um, you know, that is still kind of dragging a, a, around. Design, engineering, uh, and then of course, uh, construction and that management of that project. So. I, I would say if you, if you're committed to doing something different, let's focus on the stream bank. Let's leave the rest of the development for a future fiscal year. And, and we can get that done. We could still have access to those funds from UAJA. And uh, we can improve that.
So I'm having a little bit of a, a knee jerk reaction to the idea of not taking that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm like, no, no, no. So, so, but I appreciate that suggestion. And I appreciate Lisa's concern because I also share it. So why don't we think about it? Put it on discussion for Thursday, sleep on it, go to open house, sleep on it, come back to another meeting. Have another conversation. Think about what Dave said. Um, how's that sound?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. If we can look at the cost breakdown, maybe see if there is anything we can change without risking the grant. Um, you know, and then maybe just looking, you know, for. Probably not for Thursday, but for the future, it's just one of those things where we can, you know, take a look back and see where the estimate in July went. You know, so high to now. So I think that's uh. It's, you know, one issue with having the CIP, you know, what it is and then coming back to the budget now, but you know, I don't know. I just. I'm concerned about that job. So if we can just look at it and, and uh get a handle on where those initial estimates come in, I think will be helpful for the future.
And we, unlike at COG, we have complete control over this. So. To, the idea of putting out to bid and waiting and seeing what happens and knowing that we're not just like. You know, just fast tracked into accepting it. That's also kind of like, you know, poof, it's not as stressful. So. Um, the idea of, of reconsidering it, also pumping the ability to pump the brakes. And Pam, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um. I'm obviously not at all informed on this, however. Um, I think a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant isn't something to just say, eh. We don't need it. I mean, that's a lot of Joe to say goodbye to. Um. As well as. If you're thinking in the future, you're, you're going to want to do these amenities. As time goes on, they cost more. So uh, it might be a bump up now, but if you look at it again in three years, it's going to be worse. So that's something you need to kind of think about as well. Just saying.
Yeah, you're wise.
We can, we can certainly provide the, the cost breakdown. We can talk about the scope. We, we're, I, I'm sure that we're not going to be able to say with any degree of confidence. What will and will not jeopardize that, that grant funding. If it were DCNR funding. I think we probably, even though we'd be guessing a little bit, we'd probably have a little more confidence in what. Based on past experience is going to be of concern to them and what perhaps isn't going to be as troubling. With the lo- land and wildlife, water and fish and whatever fund that we bought this on, we got this. I, I really, I mean.
P two?
And they've been, no, C two P two is DCNR. That, that, that's a little more of a known entity. This funding program. And Centris will agree, has been really wishy washy and, and difficult for us to even get. Responses. This is federal funding, so this is even a layer of bureaucracy that the state doesn't deal with. And. DCNR is actually one of, in my opinion, one of the best ran state agencies that, that's out there and.
Oh, is this, is this statement wrong then? Because it says the township was awarded DCNR. C two P two grant awarded in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what it says on page two sixty seven.
Technically, it's correct. Um, we were awarded the grant through DCNR C two P two. But because suburban park actually previously, I think it was in the seventies, received. Land and Water Conservation Federal Funds. It's now marked as this, and I, I would have to look it up and I'm happy to share that information with you, but like as a, as a conservation. Property, like it can never be converted to anything other than public use. And it will always be eligible for land and water conservation funds, unlike other parks that haven't already received this funding. It is eligible for receiving this in future years. And so we had to be. We had to be awarded the grant through DCNR C two P two to then be recommended for LWCF funds. Because our park, our, our. Our project was, was so good.
Purposes.
Dave is ready to chime in.
Yeah, for the, for the purposes of this grant though, because of the guidelines that apply are LWCF. So you know, it's, it's, the, that's the, that's the umbrella that we fall under. For administering this grant. When we talk to people about this grant, we talk to LWCF. We don't talk to. Our DCNR regional advisor like we would for a C two P two funded project. Centris is right. We applied through the, this DCNR program, but that's really it. I mean, it, it is a, it is an LWCF funded project. We are beholden to their guidelines and administration. Unfortunately, we just don't have any experience and, and really. Any ability to predict what will or won't uh, uh, jeopardize that grant funding. So I would assume for the purposes of our discussion, that any de-scoping uh, as far as the amenities go in the park. It will, will inherently at least jeopardize that fund. I mean, I think our, our initial. Outreach to them and Centris, you, you made this connection, but it was basically, well, you let us know and we'll, we'll talk about it. And so, you know, they, they. Even they are very non-committal when it comes to changes in scope. Um, so it leaves a little bit more to the imagination. Um, but if we were to say, you know, and this would leave that two hundred and fifty cans at the table, which I agree is, is a very. Uh, unsettling prospect. If we were to just focus on the drainage way. We would still be eligible per our memorandum of understanding with University Area Joint Authority. The reimbursement for the design and part of the construction.
So we're going to talk about this again on Thursday, briefly return to it and uh, make our decision in terms of. Whether it proceeds to the next decision point, um, which there will be one. Um, so that's, that's helpful. Um. Uh, back to you, Centris. On, on the park improvement fund where we still are.
Thank you. The Greenbrier Sabre Park Project uh, as part of the supplemental agreement with HRG. The consultant uh engaged to update the township's recreation parks and open space plan, HRG. Um, the, the Greenbrier Sabre Park was one of two parks to receive a mask, a park master plan update for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. So allocated here is half that amount uh, as Greenbrier Sabre Park is, is now being um. A project that HRG has taken on to, to do an update to the, to the master plan. And then scrolling through, there's nothing budgeted for Haymarket Park. Nothing budgeted for Tudic Park or Cecil Urban Park. Fairbrook Park is the second park to receive a park master plan update. As part of that supplemental agreement with, arranged with HRG. So allocated is the other half of the fifteen thousand dollars, seventy five hundred. Songbird Sanctuary Park Master Plan is tentatively scheduled for board review and action possibly as early as the first meeting in December. Staffs recommending the allocation of fifty thousand, which was in the CIP. Um. For the, for the twenty twenty two budget to roll out the first proposed phase of Songbird Sanctuary Park Master Plan. Then there is uh. Carried over from twenty twenty one, the fence installation and tree placement for uh, Sylvie Baseball Park.
I have a quick question about structure. Is it correct that this is a little bit new where each park is listed? Was it always like that?
Last year, we presented it this way, I believe for the first time.
I love it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
The accounts had always been there, but we're using Fund Thirty Four in a, in a much more involved manner than we did pre twenty twenty one. I agree. I think it is a, it is a much pr- preferable way to account for these funds.
Very helpful.
Centris, it's Pam. I have a question. Um, Songbird Sanctuary Park, did they ever get a, a path mode through there?
I don't believe as of now, there's a path through there. I think that is something that is scheduled for because we were waiting for the master plan to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. But first we had to have it completed and vetted by various stakeholder groups. So. various stakeholder groups, so the master plan should be in front of the boards, possibly December, maybe January. Once that's approved, uh, then we can start the uh, implementation of phase one. And that's when I imagine you'll see that that path natural.
All right, are we still with you, Centris?
Uh, that wraps everything up for Fund 34.
Hey, great, um, let's move on to fiduciary funds, Dave.
Yeah, the, we save the best for last, so, and these won't take long, I know it's late, um, under.
Yes, and thank you, Century, sorry, thank you, it's getting late and I'm forgetting my thank yous, thank you, Dave.
Sorry, police pension fund starts on page 288, 289, really. Um, Eric talked a little bit about this earlier with respect to kind of reimbursements made back to the in in the inter-fund transfers, but you can really see under, well, first of all, in revenue, um, there's interest and and that's really the only source of revenue uh, other than uh, contributions made by the employees. Uh, so we do have to actually modify this, uh, based on a 3% uh, police allocation as opposed to a 5%. I think what's shown in the budget is 5%, but what we're going to be presenting, which is actually not formally adopted by the board until the last meeting of the year, so 3% allocation, um, the police have been contributing 5% for quite a few years now. Uh, they had been at zero, they went to five, because we really needed to shore up our our uh, ratio, our our how funded, our ratio of how funded our plan was, we're right now at about 88, 89% funded, which is really fantastic. Uh, for our defined benefit plan, so things are doing, uh, are are looking really good. Police have asked me if I would agree to reducing that 5% allocation to, of course, they want zero. I think I'm good with 3%, which is what I'm going to recommend that the board approve in December. Um, but every dollar that we take away, or every dollar, every dollar that they don't have to contribute is an additional dollar that the township has to contribute towards the minimum municipal obligation. When I say the township, what I really mean is the state, because we get state unit aid uh, that covers all of the police M M O. We take the difference, Eric pointed out earlier, that we first have to fund the police pension fund by law. Take the the whatever is excess, which there is a significant amount of state aid, we apply it to the non-uniform defined contribution fund, which we'll talk about next. So really, for every dollar that we don't obligate the police to pay, we either, if we don't have enough to to supplement the non-uniform pension fund fully with state aid, the township contributes the additional amount, so there is some additional contribution that's made up for, in this case, in the non-uniform pension fund. Boy, I'm realizing that 11 o'clock at night is not the time to talk about this, so duly noted.
It's so true, pension fund, wow.
I think, I think really for the, you know, for the purposes of the discussion is, you see in this expenditure item, uh, what what the pension uh, amount is, oh, paid out. It's itemized by officers that are in that pension uh, fund. Uh, so once they reach their superannuation date of retirement, typically that's age 55 with 25 years of service. For some of the, um, more seasoned officers, they may be able to get out at age 50. They're entitled to uh, a pension benefit equal to 50% of their net pay, so, uh, for the, I think it's the last three-year average of their employment with the township, so there's some formula that's involved, so you could see the pension payout. Uh, and for everybody that's in the program, our highest is, um, at least until Chief Albright retires, which is going to be never, and, uh, because I'm not going to let him. But Rob Glennie is is our highest at, and that's his annual payout, so that's, that's the non, or that's the uniform pension plan, the defined benefit plan. Um, and then the the contributions will fluctuate a little bit based on how much money we get from the state and how much money the officers contribute. Uh, but, um, I I'll spare you all the the sort of details on that for now. There's no questions on that, Fund 65 is the non-uniform pension fund. So that's again, as it implies, everybody's not a police officer, we have a defined contribution plan, a 457 deferred compensation plan and a 401A. Uh, the township contributes the to the 401A, we pay in 10% of the employee's salary annually to a 401A, so it's a really good benefit, a really good uh, amount. Assuming, provided that the employee pays 2% of their wages into the 457, which is the deferred compensation plan, the township doesn't contribute anything to that. This plan's managed by Voya, or is the plan sponsor, um, it's, um, up to the participant to decide how they want to allocate their investments based on a certain uh, allowable fund lineup. Uh, but we'll take whatever we have left over that we haven't paid into the police pension fund. Uh, and we will, uh, use it to augment our contributions into the non-uniform pension funds that we don't have to contribute much towards that 2% or that 10% match, we still have to contribute some. Um, but we, uh, what it's proposed here is 174,175 dollars would be that amount net of, uh, what we contribute from. Well, I guess, Eric, am I explaining this right?
Yeah.
So the 100, yeah.
Go ahead.
Is the 174,000, is that, that that is the M M O for the non-uniform?
Yeah, there is technically no M M O for the non-uniform, but that would be our contribution to the non-uniform.
That's why I did the air quotes. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we may have to massage those numbers a little bit to reflect a 3% police allocation and and supposed to a five.
That it, that does reflect the three, Dave.
Oh, well then, there you go. All of that. Uh, so we may have to adjust the narrative to be consistent then, I maybe is the point. In the, in Fund 60, not Fund 65. Um, and then we have on the next page, uh, 295, just a couple of, um, line items that are not, uh, consequential for the 2022 budget. Um, the only one that has a budget amount is inter-fund transfers out, so this is money that we transfer from the pension fund into the non-uniform pension fund back into the general fund. Uh, if we have some additional money left over after state aid. Eric, you have anything you want to add to the way I described that?
Not unless the board has a question.
Nope.
The, um, Fund 93, which is page 296, is the Tom Tudak Memorial Park Trust Fund. Uh, I've already had this over to the Tudak Trust. I have an ex officio membership on the Tudak Trust, because I'm the township manager, and that's how that arrangement works. Um, it's also got a representative from Clearwater Conservancy, from the Penn State uh, College of Landscape Architecture. Um, and then the two, uh, parks, uh, namesakes that Bob and Elsie Tudak have, even though they both passed away, their their appointees serve on on the trust as well, so that makes up our five member uh, board of trustees, all of our assets are either invested in the Center Foundation, which has been doing really well for for the trust, or the, um, Jersey Shore State Bank, or excuse me, First National Bank, F M B for for Tudak, uh, which hasn't been doing as well, but that's a long story. So, uh, that's revenue, revenue is really just any contributions we might get. We do get a little bit of money from Center Region Park and Rec, we get a per a portion of, uh, their their rental proceeds for the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I can't, Pavilion, that's the word I'm looking for, at at the at the Tudak, Tudak Park on the trust land. So that's accounted for, we have some rental revenue because of the farmhouse that that, um, we are able to realize annually. Then we get an additional appropriation for the, um, boarding of horses, so that's, uh, that's really revenue in a nutshell.
Dave, I'm sorry, which which line item is the, are the Pavilion, is the Pavilion revenue in?
That is under.
Gain loss? No.
No, it would be, because, yeah, so that, uh, that's gains from a center foundation.
Yeah, where is it?
It is under, we would put it under 387, oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, miscellaneous.
Uh, yeah, us other contributions, that's where we would capture that.
Oh, wait, miscellaneous revenue. No. 389, oh, oh.
No, yeah, yeah, 387 dot oh, oh.
Oh, 387, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm. And same place we put any money we generate from Center Gives, which we participate in that annual campaign as well. Um, under expenditures, uh, really, I I mean, the the line items are there for your perusal. I think the only thing I really want to call out, which, um, is I I think significant is uh, the trust wants to expand, we we met with Bob, uh, excuse me, Doug Ford and Pam Ford, who are the custodians of the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden, they're both certified master gardeners and they manage that program. And they, um, are, they want to partner with the trust in 2022 to expand the Snetsiger Butterfly Garden, the ideas that they have in mind are more of a low mo or no mo meadow area, meadowscape. As opposed to the butterfly garden, like an expansion of the butterfly garden as it exists today. So stuff that the board will have have a chance to review. Um, but and and the design is very, well, I wouldn't even call it preliminary yet, it's really was just an idea that we had talked about at our last trust meeting. Um, Dan Jones, who's our certified, who's our, who's our representative of the the College of Landscape Architecture, is supposed to meet with, uh, Doug Ford on site, I don't think they've had a chance to do it yet, they were supposed to let me know when they were doing it. Uh, and I haven't heard from them yet, they're going to walk the site, try to identify areas. I basically just kind of took a guess, well, an educated guess, working with Dave Modricar on, uh, what the cost would be and have that at about 15,000 uh, to provide a meadowscape area to, um, whatever that is, 10 acres or so, or or five acres, I think is what we've figured in there. So that's just a standing line item right now, much more to come on that, but that's the intent of of that fund. And really, that's the only significant expenditure that's planned, uh, in 2022 by the Tudak Trust. I can answer any questions you have about the fund. I could talk at length about the complexities of the Tudak Trust.
Could, but. Pam, good question.
I have a question. Um, do you ever try to do fundraising? So many people like Tudak Park and the Butterfly Garden. Have you ever tried to do fundraising for it? Just, I'm just.
Do, we do, and it's a great question, I I do a little, my time doesn't give me a lot, my schedule doesn't afford me a lot of ability to do fundraising. The Center Gives campaign has been really a very, uh, good resource, because they handle so much of that, and we just really all you know, Centris and I and Nick Figaro have to do is give them some material, and then we promote, uh, Center Gives. So that's really our main fundraiser, we talked about doing a Friends of the Park thing and some other things. You know, for whatever reason, surprise, surprise, so much of the trust work falls on me, so even though there's four other members of the trust, they're really just kind of like, they show up for meetings and that's about all there is to it. Someday in the, who knows when, it may be good for the township to dissolve that trust and and take that land under, you know, under our bosom.
Oh, boy, let's get this meeting moving.
Just, it's, and there are so many reasons for, I think that that would but there is, uh, there there's a substantial amount of assets that the trust has, close to a half a million dollars. Uh, in fact, it's it's north of a half a million dollars now, because we got as a bequest the proceeds from the sale of the Tudak's house, so got a lot of money. Um, it's just a matter of what we do with it, and we really don't have any any purpose for it, maybe expanding the dog park might be something that we, that the Tudak trusts invest in in the future, but it's all, it's all just philosophical now.
If we could just get a better system of management for the dog park, I would not be so cynical as I am about it, I just want to go on the record saying that, that if we had a system like most other communities have that ensures safety, I would be a big proponent. Um, but I'm getting really off on a tangent here, um, any other questions about Tudak Trust? All right, we've come to the end of the budget discussion for tonight. So, Dave, can I jump right into the consent agenda?
You may, I don't have any this evening.
All right, um, I would love to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second it, this is Patty.
Fantastic, any comments, questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, and before we move to the big moment, uh, is there anything that we need to touch base on, Dave, or can we go to adjournment? Hi, Dave Modricar.
I was here for the consent agenda, I had to, had to hear the consent agenda.
Your heart, please.
No, we had to hear you talk about taking the Tudak Trust under our bosom.
Yeah, I I had to, I had to wait, I had to be here for that.
He said it's alarming, love your.
I'm never going to live that one down. Like, I wish I could just pull that work right back out, yeah.
It was wing, it was wing, Dave, the words were lucky for his wing. Um, all right, with that, I think we're ready for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we're adjourned.
See you Thursday morning.
Good night.